Tina?
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Excuse me, here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Phil, will you lead us in the pledge?
Ready, begin.
(inaudible)
Okay, we need, uh, the approval of the agenda, and I have one change I would like to make on the presentations that we do, the Arts Award first before we take the SCAG presentation. Are there any other changes that anyone would like to suggest?
Uh, or, do we do the consent calendar later, or now? I want to pull item H on the Libby Park Bottle Filling Station donation.
Okay, so.
Someone wants this to be hung up.
We'll do that when the, when that item comes up on.
And, I think we'd like to, I'd like to pull K.
Well, we're gonna pull K, but you said when we bring, when we get to the consent.
Yeah.
Okay, when we get to the consent, so if there are no other adjustments this time.
Moved to approve?
Approved the agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved to second, no objection, so ordered. Okay. Hi, everybody. We got the family, everybody's here, yeah, okay. We are going to start with the presentation to Jay Hirsch for a lifetime of contributions to the Ojai Valley, to the arts, and I would like, Michael Addison, if you'd like to come up and make a few remarks before we do the presentation.
Happy to. As you know, we, we live in a remarkable community, not the least of which is the fact that there are so many people who give to the community in various ways. People who commit hours and hours as members of the council, of commissions, and people who make our life better because of the art that they contribute. There are many in this room who could say much more about Jay Hirsch than I can, 'cause I've only been here eight years. For decades, literally, Jay has enlivened the arts in this community, her work with the Ojai Shakespeare Festival, her work with private students, her work with the high school in all of the musicals that they perform, her work with OPAT on the musicals that they've created, her work recently with my production of Macbeth as the vocal director and voice coach. She's a woman of enormous talents, and not the least of which is that she gives so graciously. She's firm, she's strong, but you always have the feeling that she's embracing you at the same time. In that sense, she is an artist who gives completely, and it was with a unanimous and heartfelt vote that the Arts Commission strongly recommends the awarding of the Lifetime Achievement Award to Jay Hirsch.
Before we do the presentation, pardon me, is this picking up, or am I blowing Jeremy's ears out? Okay, so this is okay. Before we do that, I'm going to run through just a few of the contributions, and then I'm gonna ask Marty if he would like to come up. I have a quote here from you, but it probably would, uh, I could read it, but I'd rather you say it if you would, 'cause I think it's heartfelt and it is very true. Some of the credits for this exceptional member of our community, the Ojai Music Festival since 2000, work on the Ojai Arts Center Theater since 1990, work with the Ojai Performing Arts Theater since 1993 as an act, as the academy instructor and vocal musical director, worked with Nordoff High School since 1997 as vocal and music director and choral director, working with the Shakespeare Festival, as Michael mentioned. The, the list is extraordinary, from an extraordinary person, and Marty, before we do the presentation and take the picture, come on up and say to the audience what you sent to me.
Jay believes that music is in everyone, and everyone has this gift, but sometimes needs help in getting it out. I've seen it over and over again as she coaxes young men and women to get on a stage and do what really doesn't come naturally, sing to strangers in a musical. She brings joy to the art of being able to sing. I see it before every show as students stand in a circle to do their vocal warmups, as Jay leads them into not only finding their voices, but being proud of it, and I wonder how she does this miracle for every show. I grew quickly to trust her instincts and find that I can't do a show without her. I've been incredibly fortunate to have her as a friend and a colleague for over 20 years.
Congratulations.
Let the mayor through.
(inaudible). Council people close together, yeah, that's great. Paul, a little closer, Paul? Thank you. Okay, there you go, that's a nice one. Look at the award, Jay. There you go, there you go. That's great. Thank you, Mayor. Say something.
Sing something.
Thank you, thank you. There are so many incredibly, incredibly talented people in this community, and there are so many amazing educators in this community, and to be recognized is really awesome. Thank you. It's my pleasure to give back to my community because my community gives so much to me, and that's what we all do, right? Yes, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, with no offense to our next presenter from the Southern California Association of Governments, but I see a lot of young people here who probably didn't come down specifically for that item, so I'm going to give us a few minutes for those of you who came mainly to honor Jay, to sort of exit stage left, if you like, and thank you very much for, for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Let's have a hand for the audience.
Stage, stage right, that's right. I love it, the color-coordinated award, the dress.
Maybe because of the invitation of the priest.
You know, it's interesting.
It was a pretty boring agenda.
And maybe, um...
And that will be coming up, uh... So, that will be coming up in about 10 minutes. Is that what's coming? Oh, the question is, will this presentation be available after the meeting, and I, I have a nod, yes. Okay, let's do the presentation from SCAG, and then we will get into the regular agenda. So, is it Comey?
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Kome Ajisa, I'm the Director of Planning at SCAG, and I have to say, it's a double pleasure to be here on such a festive occasion, so I feel very fortunate that we are actually following, because you all seem to be very happy. I'm looking forward for this presentation going well. We, we were asked to come talk about the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, otherwise known as RENA. It's one of those processes at the state level that tends to cause some consternation from time to time. We think it's a necessary process, and we think it can go as well as we want to make it go, and our hope is this cycle will hopefully bear that out. What we hope to do today is walk you through the last cycle, how it went, so it gives an impression of what the RENA process is all about. I will walk you through some context, and Mayon Johnson, who's a housing specialist at SCAG, will talk specifically about the numbers for, for Ojai and how that came about, so you understand how those numbers came about, and then we can talk about what the next steps will be for the sixth cycle.
How, how long is this presentation, Mr. City Manager?
We asked you to keep to about 10 minutes at most, so you should be able to do that, right?
Yeah, we should be able to do that.
Kome, proceed.
So, the RENA cycle, the RENA process is something that we at SCAG have been given statutory authority to be the lead on. We, it's a requirement in state law that every five, every eight years, that there is a cycle where we go through this process of identifying what the housing needs are, and then assign those housing needs to, to the various jurisdictions. We work directly with the Department of Housing and Community Development in Sacramento, they are the guardians of the process, and we also work within the SCAG region to develop a, a policy-level process, transparent process, by which the determination is made. What comes out of it, where it affects the local jurisdictions such as yours, is at the end of the RENA process, a certain allocation of numbers is given, and then you're required by law to put those into, I think it was SB 375 that requires by law that you update your housing element to reflect how those units will be zoned for and built. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to build them, but it means that you have to make provisions for, for that capacity. We are in a housing crisis, I think most people would, would, would affirm that at the state level, more so, we believe in the SCAG region, and it's often very confusing because different parts of the region, you see a lot of housing construction going on, and you still wonder why there is a housing crisis, because it seems like there's a lot of construction activity, yet there is a housing crisis. One of the indicators of that is when you look at this slide, we know that there is a deficiency in the number, in the amount of supply. We have, the peak period for housing construction, for housing unit construction, was in the 80s, and, and it was, when you look at the, just the picture, just the picture itself speaks volumes in terms of how much we have been behind the curve in trying to catch up to, to the frenzy that we had in the 80s where we had the most production of housing units, and we still don't have enough because we are, even though there's, there's some peaks, those peaks are way below the necessary level. This slide actually is a better illustration of that. Between 70 and 80, between 1970 and 80, we used to add per unit, we, per, per 1.7 persons, we added a unit. What's happened over time is, it takes, it takes a unit per four people, in terms of population growth, so we're falling, we're falling behind, and that's really the impression that this slide presents. In, and I'm gonna ask Mayon to talk a little bit about this, in the fifth cycle, which is the 2013 RENA cycle to 2021, that's a cycle that we're currently in, we had allocated to us, in the SCAG region, 400, 412,000 units, basically, for us to allocate across the region, and so we go through a process by which we allocate that. The number that came down to the city was 371. Now, how we came, how we came to that number, I'm gonna let Mayon walk through that really quickly.
Good evening, members of the City Council, I'm Mayon Johnson, Housing and Land Use Planner at SCAG, and I'll briefly walk you through the methodology for the fifth RENA cycle, how we got to Ojai's 371 units, but keep in mind that we're going through, we're starting the sixth cycle, so what we did for the fifth cycle methodology may not be exactly the same of what we do for the sixth cycle. So, the fifth cycle process, you can kind of think of it as a five-step process, but even before this flow chart, we did the local input process, and that's the part we're actually in right now for the sixth cycle. We go to all of our jurisdictions in the SCAG region, that's 191 cities and the six counties, and we ask about population, household, employment growth. We take these numbers, and then we begin the regional determination process. HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, they give us a regional total. The last slide had pointed out the number, about 412,000 units for the SCAG region. We have to meet this number at the beginning of the cycle as a region, and at the end of the cycle, that same number. So, once we get that determination from the state, SCAG adopts a methodology, and methodology is determined by our RENA subcommittee, and then our CEHD policy committee, and then it's finally adopted by our board, our regional council. So, once the methodology is adopted, that's applied to the regional total, and then we get individual jurisdictions' draft allocation. And I'll show in a couple slides, for the fifth cycle, it was very formulaic, so you can break down exactly how each component was calculated for each city. So, once we have the draft RENA allocation, we have a revision request and appeals process, and then we adopt the final allocation. The final allocation was adopted in October of 2012, and jurisdictions had about one year to update their housing element to reflect the RENA allocation and where their growth is going to occur locally. So, the methodology for the fifth cycle, there are about four main components for this, and again, each cycle can have a different methodology, but for the fifth cycle, for the SCAG as a cog, the total allocation had four components. There was projected household growth, and I'll show how this breaks down for Ojai in the next slide, but this part is the largest component of a jurisdiction's household allocation as determined by RENA. So, for every household growth you have, you do need a housing unit to accommodate that, otherwise you're gonna get problems with overcrowding, high market costs, and you end up with a lot of economic development problems, a whole host of problems because of a housing crisis. Next, you also have healthy market vacancy need. For the fifth cycle, this is heavily dependent on that household growth, it's a fixed percentage based on some factors such as renter-owner comparisons in your community. For housing replacement need, these are units destroyed or demolished due to fire, natural disasters, or just demolished and replaced with a unit. We looked at historical data, and then we also surveyed our jurisdictions to see what was replaced, and then added that to the RENA allocation. And finally, just for the fifth cycle, due to market conditions at the time, there was an excess vacancy credit. This was granted to a lot of jurisdictions who had more units than they, due to market vacancies, and so HCD, just for the fifth cycle, gave a credit to those jurisdictions. But for the sixth cycle, due to the housing crisis, overcrowding issues, a whole host of issues, I can almost guarantee this will not be a component, so we'll most likely have those three components, and perhaps other ones for the sixth cycle. Finally, once you get the total RENA allocation, to determine the individual RENA income categories, you apply a 110% social equity adjustment. I'll go into exactly how that works, but this is to ensure that jurisdictions that have a high concentration of low-income households are not just given more of the same, and you look at current breakdown, and then you apply the 110% to get that, and again, I'll go into exactly how that was applied in the next couple slides. So, for the city of Ojai, the 371 total RENA allocation is broken down, you can see the projected household growth was 382, and again, this came from local input, and that's a process we're in right now for the sixth cycle, and we've met with some of your city staff already to start that process, and then we're still gathering data from jurisdictions to ensure that we have the most accurate data possible. Next, the healthy market vacancy need, this is a fixed percentage, and that's based on the household growth, and this is again to ensure that there are enough units for a household that wants to move into your city, there, and make sure that there's a vacant unit for them to move into. If it was at 0%, that means that you couldn't sustain your household growth. Then the market, the healthy, sorry, the housing replacement need, there wasn't, all units were apparently replaced for your city, so there is nothing additional there. And there was 22 units determined as excess vacancy credit, so we add the first three, subtract the last one, and that's how you get your city's total RENA allocation of 371 for the last cycle. So, the 110% adjustment I mentioned earlier, this is numerically how it works. There are different ways to ensure that there isn't, that jurisdictions that have a high concentration of low-income households aren't just given more of the same. Each cog, Sandag has their own, ABAG in the north has their own, but SCAG did it formulaically. 110% means that the city, you compare the distribution of the four income categories to the rest of the county. You can see that Ojai actually has a higher concentration of low-income and very low-income compared to the rest of Ventura County, so there's a higher concentration of low-income households here compared to other cities within the county. And so, at 100%, that would mean that the city's level meets the county level at exactly that level, so the 29.6% for Ojai would be 23.5%, if it was at 100% for very low income. 110% means it matches that at 100% and goes beyond that by 10%. You can go even higher than that, 125%, 150%, or just look at other factors besides just something formulaic. But you can see that after the equity adjustment of 110%, Ojai's requirement for the income distribution of very low income goes down from 29.6% to 23.3%. This is lower than the existing condition, but it's also lower than the current county distribution because of that high concentration, and you can see the opposite for the above-moderate category. Ojai started at 35% at market rate, 120, it's 120% or more of the county median income. It started at 35%, and after the adjustment, it went to 41.4%. There's a little rounding there, but it is slightly higher than the Ventura County distribution. So, once you get these distribution percentages, you apply that to the RENA total, and that's how you get each individual category's breakdown. And so, this is what we did for the fifth cycle, although for the sixth cycle, the RENA subcommittee and then eventual our board will look at different factors to adopt a new methodology going forward. So, as I mentioned, the sixth RENA cycle, compared to the fifth cycle, market conditions have changed, so the vacancy credit, for example, won't be there anymore, and there may be other factors that we look at to look at the distribution across the SCAG region, and perhaps by subregion, to get the most accurate distribution of household need that's determined by RENA. There's also recent legislation that's required to be looked at. This year, we have to look at overcrowding issues, since the last cycle did not look at that. And there's also vacancy rate adjustments, that is actually being currently debated in Sacramento, how we can address that as well, whether it should be just a one fixed percentage across the board, or if there's other factors that we need to look at as well. So, just come, a couple key dates, this summer, we'll be establishing the RENA subcommittee, that's the starting point for much of the discussion, the policy and process discussions for the RENA process, and it's about a two-year process between now and the final RENA allocation adoption, and that will be October 2021, and your local housing elements will be due, or sorry, 2020, your local housing elements are due in October 2021. So, with that, I'd be more than happy to take any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you very much.
We have a couple questions.
Yes, let's, did you have a...
Did you say that Ojai has a higher concentration of lower, low-income people than any other city?
Not every other city, there may be a...
Some of it in Ventura County.
Yeah, compared to the county distribution, it has a higher concentration of lower-income households.
The city of Ojai?
That's correct.
I'd like to see how that was viewed.
Sure.
So, my understanding, I have three quick questions. My understanding is that the regional determination is made without local jurisdiction input, that's something, the whole total, the local jurisdiction input only comes into how it's divided up?
A lot of that is actually dependent on the local input process, so what we did for the last cycle is we took all of the local input, and we added them all up as a region, and then HCD, while they make the final determination, they have to consult with the cog, so I did leave that little detail out, but it is an important detail.
Yes, it is.
Yes, and so, the local input we received, we presented that to HCD's.
So, there is a bottom up?
Yes, that's correct.
And as part of that bottom-up information, looking at the fifth cycle, household growth projection, and see whether or not that actually came to bear as true, because I suspect, for example, in our town, we have an aging population, we actually don't have a lot of, some of the household growth projections I saw have, did not come to be true, and then also, the number of people per household has dropped dramatically because we're an aging population, among other things, so that, that information is looked at, in other words, how accurate past projections were for household growth, that information does get into the process?
That is one of the factors we'll be looking at, is permitting activity as based on the prior RENA allocation.
Okay.
We can't say for sure at this point whether it means that permits aren't being issued due to market conditions, or whether or not there's some barrier of why they are not approved in the first place, it could be something else besides market conditions.
And is it your expectation that all ADUs will count as a housing unit in the RENA numbers?
So, HCD has confirmed that ADUs can count towards RENA allocations, so that it would be the equivalent of building a new unit, meeting RENA need. There may be some, they're actually developing right now some resources that cities can use to determine whether or not the ADU does qualify, since there are some, there are not a lot of constraints on it, but I don't want to say, yes, they are, and then something does not qualify.
And the city of Ventura's gonna have a huge replacement calculation?
I wouldn't say, well, most likely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, just quickly, I, just on the ADUs, is there any conversation regarding this tiny home interest that's developing statewide, how are you looking at those?
Yeah, so that is one thing that HAD is looking at, because housing, especially because of different needs, of different populations, that one house, on a large house, large lot, doesn't, won't meet all the needs of each community, so tiny homes is something that they're looking at.
And then the second thing is, how does a, a city's size, as far as, you know, we're what, 4.3, 4.4 square miles, how does that play into any of these numbers?
Sure. For the fifth cycle, that wasn't something that directly affected numbers, because some cities are more dense than others, even though they're small size, I know Ojai is not one of them, but it is something that we can look at as part of the sixth cycle methodology.
And then if you look at the growth in this community, I've been here 25 years, and the population has pretty much remained the same, the same, right around 7,500 people, so how does that factor into all of these numbers?
Past trends is also something, one of the factors we can look at. The fifth cycle was very straightforward, and especially due to market conditions, but because of the housing crisis, the sixth cycle subcommittee will be looking at a wide range of factors, so city size and historical population growth can be something they'll look at.
And then one last question is, once these numbers are determined and distributed to all of the cities, if a city doesn't like the number that they're given, how does a city appeal that?
Yes, there are two processes, they're consecutive, the revision request and appeals processes. There's some nuances that actually may change due to legislation, but SCAG will notify all of our jurisdictions, city staff, and all of our members and stakeholders as well, of the process, important deadlines, and also forms that need to be filled out, so there are ample opportunities to do so.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? I, I have just one quick one, is, is there anything to the rumor that in the first year of the RENA numbers, if the allocation was decided, that, that all future RENA allocations are modified based on the original allocations, whether or not those original allocations turned out to be appropriate?
Sure, there was a legislation, SB 828, in, from the state senate, that was proposed to look at unmet need from prior allocations to be rolled over into future RENA, however, while SB 828 is still active, that part was taken out, so unmet need is no longer a factor. While a cog could choose to do that, it's no longer a pending legislation.
Okay.
Yeah, I have one more question.
Okay, Randy?
So, we're given a RENA number, and, and we started this conversation with, although they're not enforced, so why do we go through this process, and why do we enforce this number on communities? So why do we go through this process, and why do we enforce this number on communities when technically no community has to abide by them?
Sure.
That's not, that's not accurate.
No, I'm just saying, you can explain that.
Okay, I think that the difference, and we'll clarify it, but I think the difference is, is that they are not mandating that we as a city, or anybody individually, has to actually implement, but we as a city have to remove the obstacles that do not allow sufficient numbers of units to be built. Because a lot of communities did that, they just downzoned everything to where there was no, no place for housing, or at least the type of housing that was necessary. Comey?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think there's a sense that maybe there's no enforcement of the numbers. But what we're beginning to see with successive legislation is, it's in the interest of the city to provide exactly what the mayors said, the incentive to build to those numbers. And to the extent that you do that, then you are qualified for a number of state grants that are coming online. So that, that tie is coming into place where your performance on the RINA is now tied to what funding sources you're qualified for. And there is, I think it was SB 2, has a, has a housing bond money that could also be available for communities to use, and that would be tied to how you perform on the RINA process.
Mayor Johnson, could I ask Kimbok a question on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
My understanding also, some of the new legislation coming out specifically refers to RINA numbers in terms of the levels of ministerial mandates put on cities, basically constraining their discretion, in terms of land use planning.
Well, I think you're referring to SB 35.
Yes.
So that was, yeah. So the intent there is to again, try and streamline the process. And again, there's controversy about whether or not the state should be stepping into, into local jurisdictions and usurping authority from the local jurisdiction.
Right, and that's a debatable point, but the cutting edge seems to be that RINA numbers, at least in some legislators' minds, might involve the degree of discretion that might be removed from local jurisdictions.
That I can't speak to what's in their minds, but I, but I think the idea, really, I think, in summary, I think what the intent is, is to try and spur housing production.
Right.
And so how people go about it could vary.
That's the incentive for local jurisdictions.
Exactly.
I just have one more question. You didn't necessarily answer my question, which is fine. Again, I don't quite grasp the consequence for not meeting these goals, but I can get that information later. The, the other part of it is, it seems like that we've created an environment where, like some of the overlays that we did in this community for, for these RINA numbers, for instance, we took a parcel behind City Hall and said that we could develop 39 or 40 units, blah, blah, blah. And the reality is, we couldn't use that. So what cities do is they create these entities that have no reality, so it's kind of like you're, like we're being forced to cheat. You know what I'm saying? We're being forced to do something that's not in our best interest by some of the practices that we've done.
Okay, I'll be happy to have a conversation with you on this separately as a, as a former housing developer. Okay, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you very much, thank you.
We are now, we have public communication, but I need to first question whether or not we're intending to pull anything from the consent calendar, so that those in the audience who may want to make a comment about something will know at which point they will address the council.
I would like to pull item H, the Libby Park Bottle Filling Station Donation, and I wonder, is it, a city attorney, because of the number of children here, is it possible to have that go before public comment? Would that be out of order?
It's the council's pleasure, how to order the agenda?
Okay, so I want to request that they can go before public comment.
Okay.
And then we're going to pull, I'd like to pull item K.
Okay, that's a request for item H and item K, the transportation project update. Okay, is there anything else that we're going to be modifying? Okay, if not, what?
Make a motion to approve the other parts of the-
Make a motion to approve the other parts of the consent calendar.
We have to take public comment before we, before you approve the consent calendar, in case anyone has any comments on it.
Yeah, okay.
Unfortunately.
Thanks, Paul, though, I like the way you're thinking.
I'm confused. Did you say that they cans?
No, no. What you asked for is still in order.
Okay.
Okay, we are going to invite, well, it is on our consent calendar as item H, the Libby Park Bottle Filling Station Donation, and I understand we have some guests here who would like to say a little bit, and the council person, Suzu, would you like to kick it off?
Oh, I'd like to just kick it off by welcoming them, whoever wants to speak first, and I'm delighted that we're going to have this, because it's going to help reduce the use of plastic, single-use plastic bottles. We want to head the city in a plastic-free direction, so thank you.
A delegation of munchkins, this is good.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Suzu, and these are my friends, Vida, Opal, and Savannah. We are here to talk about our concerns for the future of the environment. We feel as humans, we should not have the right to destroy this whole planet, as we are only one species out of millions. We are also concerned with our own well-being as the next generation. That is why we started the Ojai Water Bottles Project. Our hope with this project is to give people access to clean, good-tasting water, so they stop using the unnecessary item that's bad for our planet, the single-use plastic water bottle.
With Rocktree Sky's donations of the water bottle refill stations to the city, we hope to promote reusable water bottles and prevent more plastic from being dumped in the ocean.
So good.
But we won't stop there. We would like the city council's support in banning the use of single-use plastic water bottles and other single-use plastics altogether. Immediate action regarding the environment is something that many Ojai residents support. We would like to point out that also, we, the learners at Rocktree Sky, were the ones who collected the money. This project was funded by well over 100 voting Ojai residents.
Please help Ojai join the other states and national leaders in banning the single-use plastics, include-
I think I said that.
In March 2018, Malibu's local council voted to ban the sale, distribution, and use of single-use plastic straws, stirs, and plastic utensils.
Seattle, Washington. Seattle was the first U.S. city to enite, enact, enact a ban on plastic straws and single-use plastic utensils.
Concord, Concord, Massachusetts. On January 1st, 2013, Concord banned the sale of small, single-use plastic water bottles. We think Ojai should be next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you participating in your democracy. You'll all need to register as lobbyists before you leave.
Can you and Natasha come and describe the filtering system or the water system?
Yeah, yeah, so we had, we had a local plumber come out and take a look at the water fountains all around Ojai, at Libby Park, at the skate park, Sarozody. And he, you know, a basic carbon filter just installed in the water fountains themselves would do the trick for the taste, so that families would use the, the water fountains and refill their, their refillable water bottles. And then in addition, where, there's a picture that we sent in the proposal of a water bottle refill station, where you just put your water bottle in the, this is Juna.
Wants to participate.
Yeah, yeah.
She wants to speak.
Stick your water, you stick your water bottle in the, in the, under the, under the spigot, and it comes out real quickly, and so you can quickly refill your, your water bottle. And we're proposing that at Libby Park. Any, any other questions about the proposal and?
No, thank you.
And we've raised the money, Rocktree Sky has raised the money, so we'd like to make that donation to the city.
Well, thank you very much for both the donation and for the education.
And this is great, because there's lots of little kids, their favorite thing is drinking out of the fountain. You know, as soon as they can reach it, we have two levels, one for a little taller and one for a little shorter, and that's what they love, is drinking straight out of the fountain. So really appreciate having good water for them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we will go to public comment, and I do have some public comment cards.
Can we go ahead and approve now?
Do what?
Suzu?
Yes?
I believe the state attorney's saying we could approve now.
Yeah, you can approve that one, because you've taken public comment, unless there are other cards.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item H.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve item H. No objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll give a, give you guys a little break, so you can slip out the bag.
Bye. See, they get, they get government credit at school.
That's great.
Real-life speeches.
Okay, public comments, Bill Miley with Ron Solorsino. Ron, you're back. Bill, up front, what are you doing?
I did your props.
Oh, well, maybe I should have put you on second. Is there anybody close up here that would like to speak first?
No, he's fine.
Here, Gail, here's, oh, see, that's your note.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We're supposed to pass these out? Everybody gets one?
It looks like the guy from the old Milton Berle show.
How many remember that?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I live on North Signal Street, and I am one of the aging population. But first, I have a correction. The council handout you got, it says 490 square feet, it's actually 560, they made a mistake. For some time, we've been talking about small houses for ADU zoning permits, accessory dwelling units. I have researched alternative houses for backyards. At a region planning commission, I presented information and pictures on park homes. They arrive on wheels, are sighted, and stay there. The size is about 350 to 399 square feet, and they go for 25,000 to 40,000. I now have another alternative, small manufactured homes. Manufactured homes are already in our ADU zoning ordinance. I researched at Macy Homes in Ventura, who have been in business since 1951. I picked a small-sized manufactured home to show you, happens to be called Creekside Manor. The model you see that I made, and it's 1 inch to 2.4 square, square feet, is a two-bedroom, one-bath, full kitchen and living room, 560 square feet. The full size is 48 feet long, 11 and 1/2 inches wide. 11, 11 feet and 8 inches wide. The factory price is 40,000, with 10,000 to 15,000 for shipping and installation on your site, plus city and other fees. They too arrive on wheels, but the wheels and axes are removed for tier supports or concrete foundation. There's also other options, like an air conditioner for 3K. Affordability for rental is the challenge for all of this. There's several well-established builders of small manufactured homes to pick one. I just happened to find this one. And this particular one is made by Champion Home Builders. The roof comes off, if we had more time. You can see the inside, with the bedrooms and the kitchen and the living room. These are currently, as I said, allowed in our ADU zoning ordinance that's already in effect. I believe they carry good structural value and economic value. Thank you, I put, I'm going to put some of these in the lobby for people, if they want, they can pick it up.
Thank you, Bill.
I'm leaving. I'll take these away.
Okay, yeah, and thank you for your continuing effort on behalf of affordable housing.
Yes.
Okay, we have a card from Ron, you want to come on up, and Andy, you're on deck.
Got my little satchel down here. All right, hello, thank you, members of council. My name is Ron Solorsino, and I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. Tonight, I wanted to share with you a very special program that the Ventura County Library is launching this year. It's our first annual One County, One Book Community Reading Program. One County, One Book aims to unite the Ventura County community around a common narrative, spreading interest in and facilitating discussions about the selected book. In addition, people across the county will have a chance to attend a variety of events this coming October, related to the themes of the selection, including lectures, workshops, film screenings, and more. The selection for this year's One County, One Book is Barbarian Days: A Surfing Life by William Finnegan. Winner of the 2016 Pulitzer Prize for Biography, Barbarian Days is a striking memoir that details Finnegan's relationship with the, quote, "beautiful addiction of surfing," and how it shaped his life. This complex work has elements of wild adventure, detailed histories, and socially conscious introspection. It traces Finnegan's travels throughout the world, including a section on his time here in Ventura County. So to participate, community members can pick up a copy of Barbarian Days at any of our library branches. In addition to our regular holdings, each library has a little free library shelf that we've set up with additional copies. Folks can take a copy of these little free library versions to read themselves, and then either return it when they're done, or pass it on to a friend. They can even donate a new copy for others to enjoy if they would like. Tonight, I've brought each of you one of these little free good library copies for you, each to use as you see fit. Once anyone has read the book, they'll be ready to participate in our events this October. Anyone can visit our website at www.vencolibrary.org for more information as programs are scheduled. If you do have any questions about the program, of course, do feel free to reach out to me, and that's all I have for now. So thank you so much for your time. I do have your books here, I don't know if you'd like them now, or I can drop them off.
You can go ahead and pass them out if you like. All right, thank you, Ron, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
What a great idea.
Ron, someday I'm going to visit with you, and I'm going to let you know what an avid reader I am. You're going to be shocked. I can't believe the amount of books I read.
As I would say, a surf is up.
Barbarian Days, yeah. This is my favorite kind of book, biography and memoir. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, Andy, you're up, and Jeff Crowe, you're on deck.
Hello, city council. I'm here to talk about the Ojai Chautauqua Panel, which is going to be about water. And we moved the date from September 1st, which was Labor Day weekend, and we found some key people couldn't be there, which makes sense. It is now Sunday, the 30th of September. It will continue to be from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. There'll be the general manager from Cuyahoga, Ventura, and then Casitas, and a couple of other people talking about the Three Sisters Plan and some historical context, so I wanted you to be aware of that. What I would like to do is, in this book, if you, if you got one of these from the last water panel, we'll have, we'll go to those water agencies and give us the plan, where are we at right now, how's it going, but also their board mission statements or their intentions right now. So you probably know Casitas published an intent in their last board meeting, they didn't commit to anything, but they said, "We commit to the importance of the inter-water connection, the state inter-water connection." Well, with your permission, I would also like to include the June 29th letter that you published in the paper, just in case it got missed, that would be a page in the document, if that's okay with you guys?
Sure.
So I'll come back to you, and you'll get a chance to see that document, but we hope to have a full house again at Matilaha, and it'll really be a check-in, where are we at? And are we, is everybody doing what they said they were going to do? So again, we're looking for sponsors. The Ojai Valleyan has agreed to support one of the events, so that event will be free. So we'll continue to go out to the community to encourage that participation. So just want to thank you, and let you know about it.
Okay, thanks, Randy. Okay, Jeff?
Hello, city council.
Nice haircut.
Jeff, you got a haircut.
I have a handout that will be for the council members, and it's really kind of important. First off, I want to echo the fact that we do live in a remarkable community. Each of us, the council members, the people who actually live here, and the kids, really set the tone of how compassionate this valley is. I wanted to thank you very much for considering the adult, and of course, doing medical cannabis. What I've handed you is something that just happened on July 1st. The state of California, if you notice the first page, there is a section where it says pesticides. There were 12 pesticides that would be tested for at Level 1 from the first of the year to the end of this year. The BCC has moved forward the quality of test. We are making history here in the sense that adult-use cannabis is tested at the same level as medical. So turn to the second page and look at the back page, you will notice that what was once only testing for 12 pesticides, now the state is mandating that we test for all 44, and that is official as of July 1st. The three medical cannabis providers here are all supportive of this kind of quality, safety, and control. safety, and control. And we do hope that we will make you all proud. And we're working on, hopefully, getting a premier testing lab here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
No, that's great.
Yeah, very good.
Good news. Okay. Where does that lead us to? Before we go on, okay. I've got the one that you pulled, Susa, but did, I'm looking at yours, Steve. I wondered, was yours pulled or not?
No, he did, we did not pull it.
Oh, okay. Well, Steve, you can come on up and make your comment. The item is on the consent agenda, but not, has not been pulled, so.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. When medical marijuana sales was being considered by this council, I heard passionate rhetoric about the need for medical marijuana. And at the same time, from the same council members, equally passionate rhetoric about why recreational marijuana, let's not hide behind the term adult-use cannabis. We're talking recreational marijuana. Why that should not be approved. And I am wondering now, have your principles changed? Chief Freihoff, of course, is going to be concerned about additional people driving under the influence of marijuana in the city. I think a number of people in the city would share that concern. And I'm wondering if that had anything to do with your decision to put forth this ordinance. Now, whether legal or not, it appears before any legalized medical marijuana was sold in the city, there was about enough demand for medical marijuana to keep one business healthy. And I say, whether that business was legal or not, there was one business here. The council saw fit to allow three businesses to operate, and surprise, surprise, there doesn't seem to be enough demand for medical marijuana to keep three businesses healthy. Now, in a normal world, one or two of those businesses would fail for lack of demand. But instead, you propose to allow all three to sell recreational marijuana. And my next question would, in the hopes that all three would be healthy businesses now. I'm wondering what caused you to decide that recreational marijuana is now not only acceptable, but critical to the community? And I'm wondering, if you decide that it's okay to sell recreational marijuana out of these three businesses, what will be next? Should we have opioids? Should we have psychotropic drugs? Recognizing that there are both state and local regulations on both of those types of substances. But here you are, saying, "Well, we gave, we gave out more licenses maybe than we should have, and now we're going to have to allow things that we said were wrong in order to keep all these businesses healthy." And I'm just curious how your principles changed and what caused them to change. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
No, no, no. This is, this is, something can be discussed.
No, I just wanted to.
You need to clarify something?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all, but not a debate.
No, no, I'm not debating, no. Steve, as you know, we can't respond or take any action. But I just wanted to encourage you, if you haven't done so already, watch the last city council meeting so you understand our process. Thank you.
I'd move the consent calendar minus items H and K for approval.
H has been.
H has already been approved.
Yeah.
So move the consent, remaining consent calendar for approval, minus item K.
I would like, minus item K?
Yeah, that's already been pulled, yes.
Yeah, okay. I would like to pull item I for just a clarification.
Okay, well, then I'll, let's go ahead and prove, move approval for everything except I and K then.
Okay, so.
Second?
And seconded. Are there any objections? If not, the consent calendar has been adopted with the exception of I and K. My question on, on I, I went back and watched the council's meeting, and there was, I think, Paul, you asked the question. If three recreational licenses are issued, are they tied to the dispensaries? Or is, are the, any one of those could end up being strictly recreational and drop the I wasn't sure.
The present draft is worded to provide that the initial licenses for the commercial adult-use cannabis dispensaries would be provided to the existing lawfully operating city and state-licensed medical cannabis dispensaries. But after the initial licenses, or if one of those three current ones doesn't comply with the requirements to secure an adult-use license, then the rest would be either or both, or one or the other, adult or medical use. But the council can change that draft.
Change the draft we're looking at, or change the administration of the draft?
Either. In particular, the subsection F of the proposed 42604 provides, expresses that licensees can be either medical or adult or both. So if the desire is to prevent one or the other, then that would have to be changed, and that could be changed.
Okay, but if they, if we're issuing it because the medical dispensaries need an additional product, or a, I guess you call it an additional product, or product for recreation, in order for that to make the business viable, that's what it sounded like we were doing. But does that mean that the, that if I were to have a license, that I would be able to stay in business and drop the medicinal or the dispensary portion?
Yes, as presently worded. Mayor Johnson?
Okay.
So as I understand the answer, it is possible for us to word it as both only.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I would tend to agree with that. I don't want to see the medical marijuana aspect of the dispensaries go away for solely the recreation use. But I think the council made itself clear that, at least, I don't see any change in, in my position over the course of our discussion. In fact, at the last meeting, I stated that I'm making my decision without any economic consideration whatsoever. If three, if three dispensaries can't make it with medical marijuana, and they can't make it with recreation, I'm not saying we need to approve this because we're trying to make it more economically viable for them. It's legal. Ojai in its vote was overwhelmingly in support of it. I think it should be available, but it has nothing to do with the economic viability of the three people that came to us and said they couldn't. In fact, I didn't even take that into consideration in my vote.
Yeah, I would concur with those comments. This is an issue of safety. Safety of the product. These are tested products as opposed to black-market products.
So would it be legal, Mr. City Attorney, for us to make a simple amendment to the second reading?
Provided it's deletions rather than additions, and the vehicle to do that would be delete subsection F.
Or how about just delete the word either?
May operate a, well, also delete the middle or, so it'd be, subsection F would read, "City licensee may operate a city-licensed cannabis delivery or dispensary service for both medical and adult use." And then the rest has, if they secure both city and state licenses.
I'm, so move.
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to amend.
And that would be shall operate rather than may, in this case, because it's being required.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
This, I guess, again, to the city attorney, there, this would be three additional licenses?
Up two. No, it would have to be three. It would be.
Existing three.
This is structured to be, the existing three lawfully operating medical dispensaries would be given effectively first right of refusal. They'd have the first chance to apply for the addition of the adult use. And then if, if in the future, if either one of those three fails to qualify for whatever reason, or in the future, one of those three runs out of business, someone else could then try, but they would only be able to operate with this provision as both medical and adult use. They couldn't be either medical, only medical or only adult use.
So if I understand this correctly, we're talking about six licenses that could be, could be held to a piece, which would be three operating businesses, but.
Three, three businesses each, that could have each separate licenses for delivering dispensary.
Okay, but if I'm, if I run a dispensary and decide I don't want to sell recreational, does that mean there's another license out there that can be issued for people who do? That's why I'm.
No. This, as proposed for revision, this would prohibit a licensee from dropping medical. It would also prohibit licensee from dropping recreational. They would have to sell both. It is proposed to be revised. If that isn't the desire of the council, that can be changed.
Wait, wait, okay. I mean, I don't think it's an issue, but I thought a dispensary could choose to remain medical.
That.
They don't have to.
Right. If one of the three existing medical dispensaries chose not to add adult use, then that would open up another adult-use license.
Okay, so.
No way.
No, not as, not as revised.
Maybe we need to look at revising it a little different, then. The intent is to.
Yeah.
Allow medical and medical plus adult, but not just adult.
And still capped at three total, no matter the licenses.
Yes.
Three delivery, three dispensary.
That's our intent.
Yeah, the intent is no new, no new either medical or recreational. That's the intent.
Well, I think the intent is not a new standalone adult use.
Correct.
It has to be medical or medical plus adult.
Okay, yes, yes.
I think is our intent.
And if, if somebody dropped the adult use.
Yeah, we get it.
So they were only medical. Granted, there would be an adult-use license available, but there wouldn't be a medical one available, so they wouldn't be able to utilize it.
Correct.
There you go, right.
Correct.
Okay, that's what we want, yeah.
That would be my motion to have wording to that effect.
Yes, I'll second it again.
Is that clear?
That's clear. Unfortunately, that's a fair amount of wording changes to do on second reading. We'll come back with a reintroduction.
Does that mean we have to wait till the August 28th meeting?
Absent a special meeting, yes. And actually, you can adopt an ordinance at a special meeting, anyway.
Could you introduce?
You can introduce at a special meeting.
There's not a simple way to do this?
No simple way of doing this tonight?
Perhaps a five-minute recess, and we'll draft some language.
Or we could come back, we could continue to a later point in the meeting?
Yes, yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Mayor, is that okay?
So we're tabling this for temporarily?
Later this meeting.
There's no objection to tabling temporarily? Okay, so ordered. That gets us to, Randy, you have item K from consent.
On item K, Mayor, the active transportation program, the ATP. My reading of this, I just had a couple of concerns. First of all, it's, it seems like that we're approving something that, one of the comments I made at the last council meeting was the fact that we haven't had enough community participation in discussing this, this grand effect that's going to change our community and how we commute from A to B and so forth. So my concern is that we hadn't had that community meeting yet, yet we're coming back with this discussion. It seems like, reading this, that this is already moving forward. Grants have been approved. Caltrans is on board. In fact, it seemed like we're taking Caltrans and making them the lead agency and moving this forward, so I had a concern with that also. That if this is a city-sponsored change in how we're going to allow bicycles to move around our community, that it should be directed by the city and not by Caltrans necessarily. But my reading into it, it seemed like we're deferring to Caltrans because a lot of the impacts are going to be on their highway. So I had a question about that. How can, how do we, how can someone, Mr. Grant or Mr. McCleary would like to clarify that? I'd like that. And then I have another comment she'd like to pass around.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, with these comments, too. And again, it just comes back to noticing in a special joint workshop between the Planning Commission and the council at the Boyd Center, we had asked for that, and again, I didn't see it anywhere in the dialogue of this consent, that we are going to do it, when we're going to do it, and what time we're going to do it. So if someone could point that out, maybe I just misreading it somewhere.
This is pertaining to K?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to comment.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the city manager, then to Randy's questions, and then we'll.
Okay.
So I, at least, I believe, and I hope, that this was actually a response to the previous concern that was raised. This is asking for council's blessing to be able to go out and continue to do the public outreach, that we can make sure that we've gotten the, the input and the, from the public and from the community, with the idea that we would come back with a review to the planning commission, and then back to the city council for a full review of the concept plan before we really dive into the design phase. So that's really what the intent here is of the item. In terms of the, we could certainly give some specifics in terms of when we're going to do that outreach. We could certainly do a special meeting with the planning commission, if that is the desire of the council, and depending on whatever timeline council would like to choose. But if that's the objective, to get something by the end of September, I'd double-check with Mr. Grant, but I'm sure that we could do that.
I'm next, after, after Mr. Grant, I'm next. I've had my hand up.
Right, you are next, even before Mr. Grant.
I'll be after Susa, if at the mayor's discretion.
And Mr. Grant, anything that you wanted to add at this point? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just want to, I want, it's my understanding that everything here was already adopted by the council in June 2017. It's in the Ojai Complete Streets master plan. It's been approved by the Complete Streets Subcommittee, and it would be a shame to not move this forward. You know, we can do public outreach, but this has been in discussion since 1998, these things, the things that are in here.
Okay.
You know, when we first adopted the original Ojai Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, we've been discussing these, these items.
Bill?
Yeah, I'd like to know. I mean, that's, that's an important observation, and I, I wasn't sure. I didn't, I have to admit, I didn't study it completely, whether or not everything in the concept design, as included here in the ATP grant, is absolutely part of a plan already adopted by council. I was of the impression there may be, or was not complete overlap. So that's a point of information I just don't know the answer to.
Nor do I. This was in motion when I arrived.
Mr. Grant, could you explain a little bit the process? I know the council had adopted a resolution earlier to initiate the process without completely binding us. Could you give a little more explanation on that?
I think also Susa's asking about an existing adopted plan.
It's part of this.
Correct.
The Complete Streets Plan. Is everything in there, is everything in here part of that already?
I would say there's very detail for the major components, as far as Maricopa Highway, doing separated bike lanes and reducing the number of traffic lanes out there. That's certainly detailed to the extreme level in there, as well as promoting bike lanes down Ojai Avenue from the Y out to Gridley. So that's a major component as well. Sidewalk in Phil, in Phil in general is always promoted through that as well. And improving pedestrian crosswalks has been a goal of the council, as well as that Complete Streets. I think all the major components of that, for sure, are in the Complete Street Plan, as well as this, I think, when these ATP projects are awarded, it's required to have a resolution of support from the council, so that was provided as well.
And so is the distinction that the principle, the general principles included in that are now being expressed in detail by this design process, but the details of this design process are not necessarily detailed in that document?
I think that's true, and I think it is fairly well detailed in there.
Okay. Well, all I'm trying to say is whether or not, in fact, there is a, is a need for public input in terms of providing for the detailed state of the current concept review that maybe goes beyond what has previously been adopted. That's all I'm saying. And that would, and I, I'm in favor, if that's indeed the case, I would be in favor of Councilperson Haney's proposal that we have a full public workshop to receive that input.
But, but the question is, would this jeopardize, would any delay on our part jeopardize your grants? I, I mean.
I think once we start this design phase, we'll need to move quickly. I think once we start this design phase, we'll need to move quickly. It's roughly a two-year process to get the, uh, design exceptions and the right-of-way issues resolved with Caltrans, so if we were able to resolve it rapidly in the September timeframe here...
This timetable will be consistent, then, with your...
I think so, it's, uh, I think so, yes.
Okay. And just remember, there has been a lot of public input. I've been to countless meetings where there were ten, you know, we, we had, well, probably over the course of time, we've had forty people, look at this, at least, there's, and we email them the plans and, you know, and I've been, so there has been public input, including Andy, uh, Andy Catwell, the superintendent of schools. We've had Cindy, the assistant of Steve Bennett, come to meetings, and, you know, there's many people that are aware of these plans, so...
And the outreach effort is recapped on page three of this report.
Right, I'm, again, I'm not here to argue the point, um, whether something's been passed before, or, um, the fact that you've been, um, promoting this for a number of years. That's not the point here. What I'm talking about is something that's going to have a major impact on this community, and I just don't have a sense that the community has, has participated at a hundred percent. Now, if we have one of these, um, meetings over at Sarozody Park, and ten, ten people out of seventy-five-hundred decide to come, and that's all we hear, then it's going to be pretty easy to make a decision moving forward. But if we have a hundred, or we have two hundred, or three hundred, or four hundred that are voicing some form of opposition or concern, then we need to actually go back and revisit this. That's all I'm trying to say is, let's give this one more opportunity for a public hearing, and at that point, we can move forward.
Well, the clear, the, my concern is what this, how would this work with your timeframe? And I want to again add, over the years, I, I remember public, uh, input from the entire Topa Topa School, all the teachers and students and parents in favor of these kind of concepts. And so I don't know what, are you, do you feel, have a specific, what is your concern? I don't, I'm not understanding.
Okay, well, I... We're altering the way people are going to commute through this community, and I think that the community, that's fine. I'm saying, I'm thinking that I believe that the community should have an opportunity to weigh in one more time. That's what I'm asking for.
Right, and you're asking for...
And to do that within the timeframe that we don't affect these grants. So, um, I don't know what it takes to post a meeting, a public meeting. I don't think it's going to take a year, or a month, or five months. I think this could be done pretty expeditiously. So someone get back to me with a date and time.
Greg, you just said that you thought it could be done, that it's okay?
I think the only caution I should throw out there is that, uh, this is a concept level. There's a lot of this that will have to be resolved with Caltrans in the design phase. So, um, sometimes people on the concept level get caught up. I think this happened with some of the bike advocates, you know, they, uh, were extremely concerned with very minute details, and they were, wanted extensive review and, and guarantees and so on, but there, uh, these things, you can't really guarantee all of it, it has to be a concept level.
So at what point is, what's, what's the best point to have the public meeting? Should we wait, like...
I don't, I don't think, you know, putting aside the impact to the council's agendas and the timing and so on, you know, that, uh, that it doesn't, there's no harm done. I mean, it's essentially what I, or we proposed in the recommendations, is do further outreach, go through Planning Commission, come back to council, it's just a different approach at it.
Yeah, I, I view Mr. Haney's proposal as just a specific form of further public outreach, and I would further urge that Caltrans representatives be present at this workshop, so, uh, a lot of the Caltrans perspective and the constraint of Caltrans, that could also be part of the general public education process. And I, I think that, that Councilperson Haney's point here is, we've had a lot of stakeholder outreach, which is very important, but we haven't had just a well-publicized, everybody who's interested, not necessarily part of a current stakeholder group, or a focused stakeholder group might have general concerns, and this would be the general public outreach. I think it's...
Okay, I just, I've just been so many meetings about this, and I've, I've ridden around the whole valley with Caltrans for three days, and so whatever.
Do I, do I have a motion for something, or do I need a motion for anything?
I'm not sure if we need, I'm not sure if we need a motion. What we just, what we need to do is we either continue this item until we have a date certain on this public, um, meeting.
We can come back, work on a date, bring that back to council.
So why don't we just direct staff to set it up, right? Is that what you, that would be the motion, if that's what you're...
And, and I just wanted to clarify this too. So Greg, has Caltrans actually approved this?
It's only a concept design.
So, so getting back to your concern about grants, we're not the impediment, Caltrans will be the impediment.
Is that correct?
I would say it's, uh, Caltrans is working with us, and they haven't, it's, it's an extensive process, and even this, I, I certainly will attempt to have Caltrans attend the meeting, but I should warn you, the monthly coordination meetings we have have roughly twelve to twenty Caltrans people on the conference call. And so try to get one person that can commit to anything would be difficult, but I'll certainly try.
I think, you know, because this was on the consent calendar, if it had been an agenda item, I think Kathy Nolan would have been here, other members of the committee would have been here, maybe to help explain things, so, um, anyway, it is what it is.
Yeah, I, I don't, what I'm hearing is not a, a need for more explanation, it's a need for more outreach.
Right.
And so, uh, it sounds like there is time to do it. When I got on the council, this was already in motion for probably over a year, and I asked a specific question when that came before us, are we going to have the opportunity in project by project to discuss this? It'll come before council, and I was led to believe that that was true, and it may very well have been true, I just may not have known what that meant. So, um, if I have a motion, I think we have to give staff some direction here, not just a tacit approval here, uh, so...
Can I ask what the point, you were saying to go, to have the public meeting, joint meeting, and then afterwards, have it, have a meeting with the Planning Commission after?
I'd prefer two meetings. I'd prefer that, um, again, that we notice this and we have planning, discuss it one more time, and I'd like to, um, suggest that we do a council meeting, an actual special council meeting, and we create a session where we allow the public to come in and actually have a display set up showing all of the, um, articles that you have in here, all of the drawings on boards, and actually have a clear discussion with the community as to what we're trying to achieve. And then at that point, let them weigh in at the council session, and then at that point, we'll be able to give direction or approve.
Mayor, may I speak?
Yes.
All right, if, if we're going to do that, I have a request of this council. I request that you observe the kids trying to go to school on foot and bicycle, starting in September, that you really observe the hazards that they have to negotiate. I also request that you yourself walk the town during peak hour traffic, and that you ride a bicycle, so that you understand what the bicy, the bicycle-riding public is faced with. I'm seeing, when I ride my bicycle, I see parents with two or three kids on a bicycle and another, a baby in a bike trailer, and I marvel, because they're trying to teach the children the rules of the road, I marvel when they don't get hit. To me, this is a health and safety issue. It's an urgent item, because Grand Avenue, there are, there are no longer any safe way for children, they can no longer ride their bicycles to school, they can't safely walk, especially the younger ones, and what we have, the council has to understand, we have a vicious cycle going where more and more parents drive their children because it's not safe. So this is, to me, an urgent item, so I hope you'll consider that, so that you really understand what's going on in this town. I've been observing the traffic increasing for the last twenty years, and so this is something I'm very passionate about, and I hope that you would, you know, by observing, that you understand the urgent, urgent, how urgent it is to have these safe routes to school and other, other safe, other safety features. And it's also, of course, connected to reducing traffic. You know, that's a big item on our agenda, on, you know, that's our task.
And I would concur, and I would view this workshop as an excellent opportunity to educate the public about that issue. I mean, that's part of what this is, is education and outreach.
Yes, yeah.
In general, for the general public, which we have not yet done yet, and this would be an important part of the process for building support for that. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, but the people that already understand this are the people that are on their bikes, and the majority of the public is in a car and doesn't understand this. So I hope, I hope that the council will make it their business to really understand it by going out on a bicycle themselves. Okay, I, I, I mean, I...
Now, Caltrans involvement in this is on the highway, right?
Uh, I'd say this entire project is essentially on Caltrans right of way.
The entire project is just the state of the way.
And that's not Grand Avenue, then?
No, it's, the project, in quick summary, is from city limit out on Route 33, past Noraf at El Roblar, comes all the way down Route 33 to the Y, goes from the Y all the way out to Gridley on Ojai Avenue, so that's all Route 33 and 150.
So for clarity, this is just part of the Safe Streets program, or not the entire thing?
It's, it's all going to be connected.
Okay, so the direction to staff is what?
So the direction to staff, as I'm hearing it, is that we need to do some more public outreach. We've been asked to coordinate a, uh, outreach meeting, which would be a joint workshop with the city council and Planning Commission. We'll try to get that scheduled before the end of September, and then we would follow up by bringing that input back to city council.
Right, and again, I think that, um, I don't want to convolute the, the, the meeting with planning and council. Um, I prefer that it goes back to planning, let them conduct another public, a public hearing through the planning process, and then let council actually have their own bite at it in a separate meeting at Sarozody.
Okay, so the work...
Special session.
You want the workshop meeting to just be city council?
Right.
Is this something that went through planning before?
Yes, it did.
I'm sure it has.
No, I'm just, from a process standpoint, I was just thinking, is it, if it didn't before, I'm not sure why we would do it now, but if it, with that, we should refer it back if they, they had something to say before we adopted the original plan, so... Okay, you, so you're clear?
Yeah, I guess the only thing, and sorry if I'm overthinking this, but, um, it, I guess it would seem to me that the first thing that you would probably want to do is actually have the workshop where you hear the public input.
That, that's my feeling too. The workshop should be first.
Yeah, and then, then it can be referred to Planning Commission, although at that point, I'm not sure, if you might want to bring it back to council first, if there was any directions or modifications that, you know, I'm not sure what Planning Commission would do with that input, um, without having gone through council first, does that make sense to you?
One of my arguments for having a joint Planning Commission with council at the workshop is we're all there to hear the input.
Well, that makes sense too.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask Mr. Grant one question?
Sure.
Um, these are all concept drawings at the present. At what ti, at what point do they change from being concept to actual drawings you're trying to get approved?
We have to go through a step right now with, through the California Transportation Commission to get approved for the design funding. So that's a substantial amount of money, approximately $250,000 to $300,000 for that phase. As you mentioned, there's no match on that phase, that's fully grant-funded, and, uh, so that's a very formal process, requesting proposals and all that. So that, that consultant will be focused on detailing and submitting those plans to Caltrans for approval.
But the conceptual plans are more than conceptual plans?
Conceptual, there's a lot of ways to look at conceptual, but these are certainly not anything Caltrans would approve right now, although they could, they could approve concepts, and we, they haven't been willing to do that at this point.
Okay, so I guess, you know, I'm all for a workshop to, to get input, but what are we going to get input on? We have concept drawings here that may or may not be, uh, ultimate design drawings, may not, may or may not be approved by Caltrans, uh, so what are we going to do? Have another workshop after it goes to the next step? When it, the drawings change? And what, what are we going to do with the input from the public, other than if we want to educate them as to what we're doing? Are we going to scrap the project if we get people to say, well, I don't want trees down Ojai Avenue? Or, I don't want this project to be, I don't, it, it's going to interfere, we need two lanes highway instead of one? I mean, I'm, I'm just not sure what it is we're gaining. I mean, I can understand us having outreach, explaining what we're going to do, but at this point, we don't even know whether we're going to do it.
I think it would be helpful to define a few things. For instance, there's alternatives out on Maricopa Highway, which is considering, and this, I should point out, was originally proposed by Caltrans, that the traffic studies out on Maricopa don't substantiate having four lanes, that it promotes fast traffic out there. So there's, the proposals reduce that to two lanes and utilize that extra lane for substantial bike. So that is important, that the council supports that, there's alternatives, that you could still have more of a standardized bike lane on the edge with, you know, four lanes that exist out there now. There's even locations where curb extensions are proposed, where flashing beacons are proposed, so it would be helpful that the council supports all that, so when we push forward with those design plan preparations, that we're not wasting any time when they're approved, or we work, even if they're not approved, that we're not wasting a lot of time trying to get something approved, that the council might later say, no, we don't want to see that curb extension there, or we don't want that road diet out there in Maricopa.
And I can appreciate that, but are we going to get pushed back from the public that they don't want a curb extension? Is that what we're looking for? I mean, that kind of detail?
I think not the design, not the, but the locations that we have proposed in the concept plans would be good for the public to review further, and assure the council supports those locations for curb extensions, as well as the other basic concepts you'll see in those plans that we'll highlight.
Okay, so after the public outreach, and we have input, it would come back to us to decide whether, instead of having the, the curb extension here, we're going to move it to here, because the public thinks it should be here? And is that going to sway us to move it there? I mean, that's the, that's the part, I mean, it's there for, it's where it's proposed now for a reason.
Yes, yes.
I think you'll find that those have been thought through pretty carefully.
Right.
And I presume you would support, but you may feel that, uh, it's not, not a good idea. So curb extensions at certain crossings, but carefully thought out, as well as flashing beacons at some of the crossings, and, uh, trying to think of other features, the sidewalk infills, pretty much anywhere there's gaps in sidewalks between Gridley, the Y, and out to, El Roblar would be proposed to have sidewalk infill, and as well as trees. For instance, the trees could be an issue in some people's mind during the, during the drought and so on, that we're establishing more trees and so on, so if that, it's probably better to get that straightened out at this time.
So, so Mayor, just one, one last comment. I just think any opportunity that we can have the public weigh in is a benefit to the community, so, um, I'm not necessarily thinking that someone's going to come in and say, move the curb extension, or do this, or do that, but I imagine someone might come and say, you know what, the curb extensions that you've done in my neighborhood are, are not, you know, don't satisfy us. Can you think, can you rethink that? But I don't think anyone's going to specifically come in and say, don't do that there, don't do that. But the opportunity to allow the public to weigh in on something as major as changing the 33, I think is just going to benefit all of us. And, and exposing them to what's taking place is important. So that's what I'm saying, let's just, let's let them, let's let them see it.
What I'm having difficulty is, is discerning the difference between what you're proposing here and the item, which says public outreach, and this public outreach.
Yeah, you're already doing public outreach.
Well, this is a specific type of, this is a specific proposal for public outreach.
Okay, so just simply filling out, or like...
It's a specific type of public outreach.
So you, you, you were planning to do it, you got the idea that, that want it to be something other than a three o'clock meeting, you know, in a small room someplace.
Right.
They want to be sure that it's well-publicized and, and it's a true outreach, not just...
Understood.
Moving the ball down the field three yards at a time.
You know, I'd even, I'd be even for, um, having the Complete Street Committee there, being able to answer questions. I'd be for the Bicycle Coalition to have some type of a display and let them talk through what their goals and what their thoughts are in this process. I mean, I'm just saying, let's open this up to the community, and let's get a complete community buy-in, and if we can't, do some, um, displays, and do some renderings, and do some things, um, you know, on three-by-three, um, cardboard versus an eight-by-eleven sheet. I'm just saying, let's, let's let it out there.
Okay, but, you know, on page 143, on, under outreach efforts, it just feels to me that a lot has been done. So if you don't think that's adequate, in my opinion, it's been, it's been adequate.
I think, I think there has, has not happened is a general, well-publicized workshop with both public education materials and an opportunity for, for everyone, not necessarily part of any particular group to, to speak.
And I want to point out too, that we've done the outreach shown on that page, but we are proposing to continue the general public outreach, that's the step we never took, we took focused outreach.
This would be a type, the way to do general outreach.
Right, and I think we go out of a way to make sure we do nighttime weekday meetings, weekend meetings. And I think we go out of our way to make sure we do nighttime, weekday meetings, weekend meetings, go through a few series of those, and then go back to the Planning Commission, what we proposed for the second portion.
What we're proposing is do one.
And it's very, so whatever, way or you're skin to cat, yeah.
So is it possible, I mean, I would like to make a motion that we approve item I, is it item I?
Okay.
With the understanding that there's going to be the public outreach that we have, that's already described in here, and with the additional public outreach. That's my motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. What, any further discussion?
Is it, is there an understanding that the motion by councilperson Francina basically includes the suggestions we've been making?
That's my assumption. I was going to ask for that absolute clarity though, after the motion.
Yeah, we approve the consent item as described, the recommendations, with the addition of the more, the public outreach that you're asking for.
Okay, great, great.
So a well-publicized-
Well-publicized.
Meeting.
It already includes all kinds of public outreach. It's well-described. And then just the additional general public meeting. Okay, so we can approve and move on.
Is there a workshop in there or not?
Yeah.
Is the joint workshop in there or not? I wasn't catching that.
Yes, be a joint workshop with council and Planning Commission.
So public outreach first, and then we do the joint public outreach, joint workshop meeting second. And then we go back to PC, and then we come back to councils at the order.
Well, I think you'd have your comments from Planning Commission at the workshop meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so it sounds good.
I think we got it.
Sounds good.
I think you do, okay.
Yep.
If you're satisfied, I'm satisfied.
Okay.
Okay.
And I've seconded the motion.
Okay, good.
Moved and seconded. If there's no objection, so ordered.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now-
We can return to cannabis if we wish.
Yes, thank you.
Done subscribing. Thank you for the opportunity to write on the fly. Item 1I. So what I propose would be tweaking the language of subsection F within the bounds of the original intent and this further expressed intent. Sticking to that original intent that there be three adult-use licenses, max. That's sufficient to stay within the bounds of not needing to come back for a further introduction because we're wordsmithing existing language. And so the proposed new subsection F would read, "A city licensee shall operate as either a medical cannabis delivery and/or dispensary service, or a medical and adult-use cannabis delivery and/or dispensary service, if the licensee obtains all required state and city licenses, period." And there's the prior two subsections that require license separate for medical and separate for adult, and the state has now combined those two. It would continue, "A commercial adult-use cannabis dispensary alone, without also providing medical cannabis, is prohibited", thus effectively accomplishing the goal set, three licenses, max. And then, if the two businesses operate together, both delivery and dispensary, and it's either medical or medical and adult use. So if, among the current three existing medical providers, if one of those three does not choose to, does not choose to apply for an adult use, or does not qualify, then that adult-use license sits unavailable to be used until another medical provider operates. So it would prevent a standalone adult-use business.
So moved.
Second?
And just to be clear, it would prevent, it's implicit, is that the word? That there wouldn't be a fourth application approved?
Yeah, it's explicit, because the existing text provides the, existing text provides, "Only three licenses for commercial adult-use cannabis dispensary and/or delivery services shall be issued", and that's in the existing text.
Excellent, good. All right.
I imagine down the road, this ordinance is going to be amended, because I just have a sense that if I can go and purchase recreational cannabis, why do I need a medical card?
You don't.
You don't.
You don't. There's no necessity for it.
There is a tax benefit.
Why do I need the medical aspect of this if I can already just go purchase it?
There is a tax.
Unless medical cannabis is entirely different.
There is a tax implication, I believe. It's different. City manager?
There are also differences in products that you can obtain. You can get products of higher concentration through a medical dispensary or a delivery service that you cannot get through an adult service, so.
It's a different product.
There are specific things that you-
And we want to say, we want those products available everywhere.
And in addition, it's a higher quantity as well. If you're, if the medical patient's doctor or physician recommendation is of a, is of a certain level, they are allowed to have that level. They're not limited by the one ounce per person adult-use possession limit.
Okay.
There's also a minor exemption, at least in this point here, for the paying of the state tax. If you have the state-issued card, then you are exempt from paying the sales tax on that.
Okay.
For the medical.
Oh, and then I have one more quick note. I think, from the medical perspective, my sister's dog came to visit us the last couple of weeks for my wife's knee surgery. And my wife had a candy bar on the bed, and guess what that little dog did? So it was, it just brought a different type of awareness to us that you have to be a responsible owner of this medical cannabis because you can harm a child, a pet, and probably someone that could react entirely different to it even as an adult. So it's just, it's just-
Same for prescription drugs.
It brought a big awareness to us as a family.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a common, I've heard those stories before where the dog gets the candy, yeah.
A very expensive vet bill.
There are cases of children in Colorado, so. Matt, just one last request for clarity. Are we talking about a maximum of three vendors? We are not creating a franchise that can maybe be traded or an entitlement to a new application that goes above the three?
Yeah, this retains the existing max of three.
Yeah, okay.
Let's vote.
No further discussion, okay?
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
No. Very good, okay, we are done with that. We're now on item number two, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Priorities for the Planning Commission and Community Development?
Yes, thank you, thank you Mayor and members of the council. This item was prepared actually for the June 26 meeting, and it was continued due to lateness of the hour. So the report is back on here, again, with the unexpected and unanticipated leave of absence of our Community Development Director, and we do expect him back hopefully at the end of this month. It has created a shift in some of our priorities. While we have been able to keep the day-to-day activities of the department moving forward, and hopefully moving forward quickly in terms of processing applications and whatnot, it does slow down our ability not having the permanent director to move forward on the development of some of these policy-related items. So as council had requested, they wanted this item to discuss, to bring back the resetting of the priorities for the Planning Commission and Community Development Department. I have taken the list that the council had adopted back in April, and made some modifications and added some time to that. That is what you will see on page 2-2, starting at the bottom of that page and continuing to page 2-3. That is the City Manager's recommendations for the modifications to the schedule. Of course, this is council's directive in terms of the order and the priority in terms of how they would like items to come back, so that is my recommendation. We're happy to take your input.
Uh, Mayor Johnston?
Bill?
I had a, I hand out this, some questions really quick about the wording. Excuse me, I'll get two here. On a couple of these goals, so I really didn't have any issue with the proposed timing.
I'm fine.
Is there another one around?
I'm good.
All right, well, good. I think I made not enough. Anyway, I just want some clarity on a couple of things. Didn't really have an issue with timing, but I did have a question with the wording. And I'll go through them really quick. On task 1A, the fences, walls, enforcement discussion, I believe that was an enforcement and possible discussion of code text amendment discussion?
That's absolutely correct, yeah.
So in other words, I would like to add, and code text amendments, just not about enforcement.
No objection to that.
You know, B, rather than just a general plan update, I think we were going to have a discussion of general plan update strategies? How to approach this?
Agreed.
Okay. C, same thing, rather than just a parking study report, I think we were going to have a discussion of parking study scope and strategies?
Yes.
And D, I believe it was not just the, this is on Planning Commission D. Excuse me, where is this? No, it's E. I'm sorry, I miswrote there. 1E, discussion of existing guidelines. It wasn't the arcade design guidelines discussion only. I believe we were discussing filling in the hole of looking at both existing guidelines and additional design guidelines, looking at going east. Between the existing east guidelines and the arcade plaza guidelines, there was a hole there. And we were going to look at not just the existing guidelines, but filling in that geographic hole.
Yeah, I'm wondering if maybe we're confusing or combining a couple of items here.
Okay.
Because, Matt, wasn't this an item that you were working on in terms of the lot coverage standards for the-
Well, that's a separate issue.
Oh, I'm really going to get mixed up then.
Lot coverage is 2E.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at, looking at 1E.
Now I understand.
Now, it says arcade design guidelines discussions. I believe we were looking at east of the arcade as not having any design guidelines. I'm looking down here. And we were looking at filling in that gap, I believe was the genesis of that.
No, that's correct, thank you. I was, I was looking down the list there. I was in the wrong spot completely.
Yeah, 1E.
Yeah.
And then my final comment was, I don't recall us approving, developing, and adaptive reuse ordinance. I don't recall a term sheet coming to us for approval for further staff support on that.
That was a, brought up, I believe at the end of a council meeting by two council members. And the idea was coming back to make some modifications to the code here. It had to do with the issue of, trying to remember what we were trying to-
I guess my point is that the-
We haven't come back.
The procedure would be to come back with a term sheet.
Right.
Before we actually develop the ordinance.
Correct, we've not come back with the term sheet yet, but that was, it was requested by council that staff take a look at it.
Those are my only comments.
And that was my understanding, is to come back with a term sheet.
Right.
Together with the Luke.
I was just trying to be precise, is all with the language.
Sure, no, we appreciate the clarifications.
Moved to approve?
Second?
As amended?
As amended.
Yes.
Now, these are just being slightly shuffled because of the personnel?
Correct, most of them moved back in the order of about, you know, four to six weeks in magnitude.
Yeah. And everything's going to, not everything, but the key things are coming back in, what, late August and September? I guess my concern is, is things like, you know, water-wise, landscape, those are things that are within our power to do something about, and we've been talking about it for over a year. And we're headed right into what appears to be the prolonged drought now. Maybe El Nino will do some good, but, and then a lot of these things, like the tiny home ordinance and the general plan, all of that stuff seems to fit under the umbrella of general plan. Even the housing, we heard tonight about scag rena numbers. And for some reason, we don't seem to move that off dead center. But we, according to this, we're going to start the general plan when? It says "to be determined", if I read this correctly.
Yes, staff needs to do some work on that before we can come up with a date. We need to get the, get our game plan in order, then have that discussion with council. I would agree with the council member, we really need to sit down with council and have the discussion on how council wants to go forward with that. There's a lot of different ways that we could, you know, take, start, you know, how do we start to eat the elephant?
When was the last time we did a general plan update?
Eighty-eight, I believe.
When? Please, I want to answer the question first.
I believe it was the late eighties.
Right, okay, yes, Bill, what?
Yeah, I wanted to provide input to that answer. It depends on what part of the general plan you're talking about. Some parts of our general plan were updated in 2013, other parts of the-
I said a comprehensive general plan update, and the answer is the late eighties.
We actually, we don't, we've never done a full comprehensive general plan update. It's always been done piecemeal.
Well, then maybe it's a good time to quit doing it piecemeal, I guess is my opinion, right?
Counsel to decide the strategy.
That, of course, is true, Bill. You were adding, you were adding your answer to an answer that hadn't been given. Okay. I strongly am encouraging the council, I know it's a big thing to undertake, and that's why people don't do it, but the idea of doing it piecemeal is not general planning. Specific planning for specific tasks. And just like things like safe streets, you know, we end up going down a particular, no pun intended, road, and then we're told, "Oh, well, we have grants, we can't back up on this one", or "We've got so-and-so involved, we can't do that". Every once in a while, and we need to take that step back, and I think that would be a great, a great help to our planning commissioners who periodically express bewilderment as to what we really want them to be doing. So, okay, the motion is what? Do we have the motion already?
Yeah, we motioned and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. There's no further comment?
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay. Number three. The Sterling Venue Ventures to add two additional shows.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is before you as a request from Sterling Venue Ventures. They are currently the exclusive commercial operator of our Libby Bowl facility. The agreement that the city entered into with Sterling back in, oh, September of 2016 had a provision that there was a minimum of 10 events and a maximum of 10, a maximum of 17 events that could be provided in any one particular season. Sterling Venue Ventures is requesting the council to grant them the ability to go above the maximum of 17. They're requesting to do a total of 19 shows for the 2018 season. The reason for that is, one, they had, they had their lineup of 17 shows all set and ready to go. And subsequent to that, they were approached by a band, which, which are, we were now a bit more familiar with here, which is a band by the name of Vampire Weekend. When the Vampire Weekend folks approached Sterling, that was not something that they anticipated for the 2018 season. And they felt that it was an excellent opportunity to have them come and perform here, and in fact, the shows did very well. Of course, the dilemma though now is in order for them to add in those two shows, they now have two other shows that would take them obviously over the maximum. So again, they came in with the idea of doing 17 shows, but I guess you could say as a result of good fortune, they had these other two that fell into their lap. So it's purely up to the council here. This was, this decision, the lease was decided by the council, and the provision to put the maximum in there was put by the council. We did not feel that this was something that staff could, could make the decision on. I am recommending that the council grant them the two additional shows, seeing that we've had pretty good feedback, I think, from the community. The impacts have not been overwhelming. And I think if nothing else, it gives us perhaps an opportunity to really see, you know, if you load this thing up, what is it going to mean in terms of the community impacts, both good and bad? So I think a good opportunity to, to study that. I have to say, for my own, to be counter to my own logic, I realize that there could be a bit of a slippery slope argument here. If the maximum was 17, well, 19's not the maximum. Well, if you do 19, why not 20? Why not do 21? So I recognize that. However, I think the idea is that they would not be asking for anything further beyond these two additional shows. So it's certainly up to the council if they want to grant those. You could certainly grant one additional show or the two additional shows, or you could simply deny their request and ask that they stay within the maximum of 17. Luann Nash is here from Sterling Venue Ventures. If you would like to answer any questions from, if you'd like to direct any questions to her.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, because Councilman Haney and myself were involved in the negotiation of the first contract. And we wanted to, we were quite surprised actually that they asked for 17 shows. And we were fine with it so long as we didn't feel that it impacted on other dates. And there's certain, what were called legacy dates that included the music festival, the Mexican Fiesta, some other dates that were already pre-arranged and guaranteed a time at the Bowl. And we felt that 17 would fill up the calendar enough that it would still leave some dates available for other organizations to use the Bowl. But I don't believe, particularly this year, that the dates have been filled up outside of the- up outside of the seventeen that they have, and the dates that they're requesting are available, so, that's kind of a little bit of background.
And the dates are available?
Yeah.
Yes, it's not...
These are specific dates and not just two additional?
Correct, it's, it's not, it's not affecting the split of the calendar, it's not affecting any of the legacy dates, that's correct.
Okay, Bill?
Just a question to staff before we hear if there's any public comment, a technical question, are we allowed to introduce any additional stipulations with, by, you know, in the granting of, if we granted a waiver for two more dates, so city attorney and staff question, are we allowed to have additional stipulations, not in the original contract on those waived dates?
If they vary the terms of the contract, we'd have to renegotiate it.
Okay, and perhaps we could request it?
What I'm trying to say is we cannot attach any stipulations, we have to, it's a go, no-go, we can't say, we'll give you two additional dates if this also happens.
You could negotiate it with them.
Yeah, you can negotiate a conditional waiver, for sure.
The council could have a motion including those stipulations, in other words.
Hmm, right.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I guess we could, but that's not really a negotiation, I mean, we could, I would think that we'd need to have a group get together with Sterling and discuss that.
That's what I was trying to understand.
I mean, I think it would depend in part on...
It's the scope of our decision-making here.
I think it would depend in part on how much, what you're asking for, which I know you have stated it.
All right, then we'll get to that, okay.
We're gonna get to that?
Yeah.
Okay, good, okay, so, I was, you pretty much answered my question about the legacy fence, I live maybe two blocks away, and I've never been impacted negatively by the noise, it's very pleasant, so I'm inclined to, you know, with some stipulations to...
I didn't know if we had public comment before we do.
Yeah, there's gonna be, I mean, yeah.
I don't know if we have public comment.
I want to hear a public comment, but, so they get the lay of the land.
Okay, Mary Ann, are you out there?
Hello, it's really good to hear that Sterling wants to add, want to add two more shows, I myself, I don't, I don't have any objections to that, but I believe that this has to be outside of the original contract, he's got favorable terms and conditions, and that will be, you know, like, outside of our interest, he is the only one that is a commercial events to, to the Bowl, and we are losing lots of money if we go with the original contract, so that's my only comment, you know, like, so taking consideration that we are happy to have music, he can go two, four, ten, we don't, you know, like, we don't have any objections to that, but I believe that it has to be outside of the original contract, that's all.
Did she give her name?
Yeah, Marianna...
Mariana Burden.
Burden?
Are you on the, on the committee?
I am on the committee, and I am also a promoter myself, I produced a couple of shows the last couple of years, my husband is Eric Burden.
Okay.
We put concerts together, and I am also an attorney, so I know how to read contracts, and this is something that I would suggest for the, for the city.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and Amber Young? This old home week?
Hi, just as a point of order, just for clarity, we, the council would, in order to be able to, for the, for Sterling to be able to proceed with their full season, would need to approve twenty dates, they came into the season with eighteen on their established calendar, and then added the two additional for Vampire Weekend, one thing that I can say, having been managing the Bowl for the past while, is that the way that they have their, their events scheduled this season, they have them clumped onto weekends, so it has been not as impactful on our other users, and so it's been, so as far as your concerns about the calendar getting filled up, we've been able to accommodate our legacy events and find homes for everybody else who wants to have a weekend, so.
And you say, how did we get from seventeen to twenty?
So, when Sterling, when Sterling, and I apologize, I thought I'd made that clear, when Sterling published their schedule in the paper, they, they had, they had published eighteen dates, so they were, they had already exceeded the seventeen limit, and then when they added the Vampire Weekend, it added the two additional dates, and as we're here in front of you, I just want to make sure that the full picture is, is clear, and I apologize, I thought I had made that clear early, before the city council meeting.
Okay.
So they, so they will, in order to fulfill their season, as they have it published now, will need to add, the council would need to approve three additional dates above and beyond the contract.
Mr. Mayor, could we please hear from Ms. Nash first, because that was who I had my conversations with in terms of the additional dates, and my understanding was that we were asking for two additional dates.
My apologies if I over, if I overstepped.
Yeah, just a little bit of confusion over to our agreement, because the signed agreement that we have, that we've been working off of, says a minimum of ten concerts.
Yeah, but Luann, that was agreed to that evening with Lance here, I don't know why there's any confusion on that, the agreement that we sent over for signature had a minimum of seventeen and a maximum of seventeen, there was some issue with the document, I don't know where that happened.
I, I don't...
But there were multiple occasions that evening when Mr. Sterling agreed, here in this chambers, to the seventeen, that was agreed to.
Okay.
Period.
I just know what I had in the file, so when we booked eighteen, we didn't realize that we'd gone over, and the same with the two, but, and then when Steve and I talked, and we realized, you know, respectfully, we understand you want us to only do seventeen, so we're coming to ask permission to fulfill our, this was our original schedule.
So, yeah, we need to be, have clarity as to what the ask is here.
So, and the Vampire Weekend, as Steve said, it just dropped in out of the sky, and it was a, we thought it was a great opportunity for, to bring new people into the community and to take the venue up to another level, so...
Apologies to the council, because in all the conversations that I had, I was, it was told that they were seeking the two additional dates, and it was because of the two additional dates for Vampire Weekend, so I apologize, this is, this is new to me this evening.
So what is our ask here?
So it sounds like the ask from Sterling is that they're asking for three additional shows.
Yes.
Okay.
So the ask is three?
The contract right now says, what, seventeen?
Minimum of ten and a maximum of seventeen per season, and it says that may be waived by the city, but it does not give any particulars as to how the waiving can be done, or under what circumstances, and it did not give that, it did not give that option to staff.
And when they speak of complying with their schedule, does that mean they already have booked acts? So, and the concerts of the, what was it, the Vampire Weekend?
Our weekend, yes.
Was, what, plugged into one of those booked dates?
Those were extra, they...
I know they were extra, but were they, did they bump somebody else?
No.
No.
Okay, so we then apparently authorized that?
Well, no, because we've never authorized more than seventeen events.
I know, but the dates, aren't they, who authorized on the calendar, if they came in and used the facility, didn't, don't we control that?
We absolutely do.
So they were there by approval of whom?
Well, I believe that the original dates were approved, and then the Vampire Weekend came in after the fact, but there was confusion on their part because they did not understand that there was the maximum of seventeen.
I think the question is the date that the vampire group came in, was that already on your calendar?
No.
No.
So those are additional dates, that you brought those into, and the mayor's question is...
And that pushed us over.
And the mayor's question is who approved those two Saturday and Sunday concerts?
Yeah, we would have approved, staff would have approved those dates.
Yeah, so staff did.
But this was, the whole thing we're involved in now was unknown to us at that time?
There was confusion at the level between the promoter and the staff, and there was confusion about the minimum and the maximum, and when it was brought to my attention, I tried to do my best that I could to clear it up as, as much as I could, because that was clearly established at the time of the contract.
So is the representation that there are three more acts, or...
Dates. That they are requesting to do, but we do not need to grant...
Not the dates, but I'm talking about, they've already booked the three groups and for those dates, and we just have to say that it's okay for them to be in there, they were in...
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, but they've already had one of those dates.
Well, right.
They picked, that date's already come and gone.
Well, the two dates for the Vampire Weekend have already come and gone.
Right.
Which would mean they would have to drop other shows that they had promoted and booked at this point if they were to stay at the maximum.
At seventeen.
Correct.
Right, but there are, the, the shows that they're asked to have are on this calendar.
That's correct.
Right.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, they've already had the, where's the third concert that's the extra?
Well, that's news to me, so...
We, when we originally booked our...
Okay, all right, so the...
Eighteen.
So really, other than the published calendar, there's two dates, additional shows that they want to request, and those two shows have already happened.
That'd be the way to look at it, right, correct, yeah, yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, Bill?
I just, when we're done with public comment, I'd just like to be recognized for purposes of deliberation.
Okay.
You know, I have some, I have some, I'd like to begin deliberation if we're done with public comment.
Okay, well, yeah, okay, so you...
I just would like to say Lance would have been here tonight, but he's recovering from two surgeries he had last week, he's fine and everything, but he just wasn't up to...
Thank you, so those are the only two cards I have, so we will now...
Did we hear from...
Just, okay, what?
I still have a question of either Amber or, I'm sorry.
Luann?
My, would you clarify for me how the extra concerts, what is your position, I didn't understand your position, do the extra, additional concerts benefit the sustainability of Libby Bowl, I guess is my, is my question? I just want to be real clear on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the, first, to my mind, the more that we can have things that are healthy for the community in the facility, the better the facility is for the community, and one of the nice things about having worked with Sterling with, outside of this particular instance, and if you have any questions about how the facility's booked or how we manage the contract, I'm happy to respond anytime, is that they've been extremely responsive when we get a noise complaint, they turn it down, when we have complaints about not being able to access the water fountain, they change their setup, they've just been, you know, when we've had issues with garbage being placed on the trimpin' arch, they're working on policies within their, with their people to make sure that it's clear and that their ticket takers are away from it, so they've been really good partners for the facility and with, with responding to the community's concerns in my personal experience. So that being said, I think that having additional shows that are of good quality is in the community's best interest, especially with regards to Vampire Weekend, it brought in a different crowd, it's a, it's a much different...
But the question I think was, is how does that benefit Libby Bowl itself as a facility, is that what you're asking?
So the more, so, the more, the more that the Libby Bowl is used and seen and recognized, the more people want to come to it, and so I've noticed that the, that the more it's known that it's being used, like, at the Independence Day concert is a perfect example, there was almost, there was probably nine hundred people at the Independence Day Committee's concert out there, and two years ago, there was probably a hundred and fifty, maybe, and I think it's because people are beginning to get in the habit of coming out and using our facility, we also have more nonprofits approaching us about using it, the Youth Opera is coming back, is hoping to come back again in 2020, and I think that all of that stems from this increased use and awareness, personally, but that's my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question before...
She wants, she wants to also respond?
I just have a question, Amber, while you're speaking, are you speaking on behalf of the city, or are you speaking on behalf of you, or, or what's your role now, because you're no longer an employee?
I'm no longer an employee, however, I am managing the Libby Bowl on behalf of the Ojai Music Festival through a contract, and so I'm speaking on behalf of my role as the manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I feel I have to interject here, the management of this contract is in my office, I would respectfully ask that questions regarding the management of the contract be directed to your city manager.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's, so, okay.
So, my, my comment again, you know, like, is that I understand what Amber said, it is to our benefit to have more dates, more gigs in the Bowl, but we have to benefit from those, the terms and conditions in Sterling contract are favorable to Sterling, and are not favorable to the city of Ojai, so, those two shows, that they were successful, they were sold out, I don't see why not to treat them as a normal commercial event.
Mayor Johnson? Okay, just, just a second, just, please, through the chair, and the chair would like to ask a question of the city manager, what was just said regarding the benefit to the community as opposed to the vendor that is subletting the property for a commercial purpose, what is the, can you distinguish or explain that?
Well, you're talking about the, the terms of the lease and the financial benefit back to the city, so, we could certainly debate and discuss, and, and probably would not be the time to do this this evening, correct Mr. City Attorney, the, the terms of that agreement and how beneficial it is to the city, that's, that's certainly something that could be debated, I myself have some opinions on that, I know many people do, but that's not really what we're here to discuss tonight, the way that the contract is currently structured, and again, I'm not trying to, to make an argument here necessarily to carry the day, but I just want to give this analysis to council, it's broken down by the, by the, basically, the, the net that he sees in any given month, and if that net reaches a certain level, then there is actually a split of those profits to the city, so you could make the argument, and again, I'm not going too far out on a limb on this, but, but what that could do is that could actually improve the city's chances of actually seeing some money coming in, because it would mean that he would have a better chance of, of making a net in any given month with the additional shows, the other benefit that it, that it, that it definitely would bring to us, and again, you could argue this, is, you know, we would at least receive the, the maintenance fees for the tickets that are sold, and that would, that comes back to the city and goes into the maintenance fund for Libby Bowl, so...
Where does the net go, when you say the share, the split of the net?
So there's a, so if the, under the terms of the contract, if the, if the net for Sterling in any given month is above, I believe, thirty thousand, then that is split sixty, forty, between Sterling and the city.
And how do you audit that?
They provide us their manifest with the tickets and, and everything else per the exhibit in the contract, which stipulates how they're supposed to break that down, so they provide that to us monthly.
Mayor Johnson?
Bill?
This is, that's, actually, it's a great entry to what I want to focus on, on this deliberation, because it is important to realize that the reason for seventeen is stated right in the staff report, time to assess their impact, time to assess the impact of those seventeen, it's worth noting that we still have no full annual report from the previous completed season, it's worth noting that we have not had a contract review from the previously considered complete season yet, we do not have a report on the differences between total attendance and total sold tickets, in particular, the comp issue issue, we don't have a full financial report on looking at how nets were calculated, which are notoriously problematical, and in light of all of that, what I was hoping was possible, was that we approved the additional shows with a provision, since it's outside the contract, of a flat rate per waived date, no calculation of net, no issue of ticket sales, just a flat rate for each of those additional dates, and that that amount go one hundred percent to the facilities, R and M fund, and that also that the, we have in the resolution, the council, that the council will take up a full annual report and contract review as an agenda item, no later than the, than the end of October of 2018, that's what I was hoping we could do, and I was, I was thinking of a number of, I'll actually pass it out, my, my proposed thoughts on this, is a flat rate of thirty-five hundred dollars per waived fee, I guess, I just think that it's important to, if that's legal, that we understand that, that, I, I think that there are, in lieu of our having the information for assessment, which has not occurred.
How does that thirty-five hundred dollars relate to the normal?
Well, that's the problem, it's, we have been collecting very little.
Right.
Uh, because of, comp tickets are not counted for the facilities fee, in my understanding, correct if I'm wrong, and also that...
Right, it's per ticket sold. Right, it's per ticket sold.
We have non-audited we have non-audited net financial numbers. We simply take what Sterling gives us.
And when you say this is not as part of the 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 contract or the franchise, whatever we want to call it.
I was hoping that we could be, as one of the speakers pointed out, that if this was a if these are considered outside of the contract, that we could have an additional stipulation of saying, yes, we'll wait we'll allow you three more dates, but thirty five hundred dollars.
My question is, is if this is outside the the franchise and this isn't changing the.
No.
The standards or the number.
Of the seventeen.
The origin the seventeen remains the same. This would be an exception to that.
Right.
Is that kind of what?
That's what I'm hearing.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Mayor, Steve, as I recall, wasn't it a four-year contract?
Yes, yes.
And were there any provisions in it to review or renegotiate during that four-year period?
Not in specifically built into the contract. I understand that council has asked for that.
There is a cancellation.
Right, there's a cancellation clause. I I understand that.
Right, but it but it has it 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 renews automatically.
After the fourth year.
Well, no, from year to year.
From year to year, okay.
There was an annual.
We can we can cancel it.
Only only for the first four years. Other words, it does not need to come back to council to extend from one year to the second year to the third year.
Right, after four years it does.
After four years it does, right.
And so are we saying that we we have been getting reports from Sterling as to what he's been sharing?
Yes, I've been working to get those cleaned up so that we could pass them along to council. By cleaned up, I mean in a little more readable, understandable format. And and Luann and I have been working on that.
Okay. And how much money is in the maintenance and depreciation or sinking fund on the bowl?
Oh, boy, I don't I don't want to hazard a guess.
I think right around thirty four thousand.
I was, well, yeah, if I was going to guess, that's what I was going to guess, somewhere around thirty to forty.
After how many years of operation?
And certainly under the Sterling, the the issue of whether that applies to all entrance tickets or just to sold tickets with no calculation for comp tickets is a is an issue that I really want to understand. And what I'm proposing is that we say we'll give you three more dates, but we're just gonna we're not going to worry about calculation net. We're not going to worry about calculating tickets. It's just this is the fee per waived date.
Well, we're really only, Mr. Mayor, we're really only saying we're going to give you one more date. Two dates have already happened.
No, it's three more dates.
One has happened.
Right, but yeah, but oh, I see. So they'd have to cancel some shows.
That's correct.
They have to cancel three shows.
They are asking for.
Okay, gotcha. I'll just I'll just make one other comment with regard to the contract as to looking at it from the standpoint of the our negotiation of it. When when the bowl was under the management of the the Libby Bowl Foundation, there was absolutely no activity in the bowl to speak of, no commercial activity whatsoever. Or if there was, there was onesies and twosies.
Minimal, yes, yes.
Minimal at best.
Most of it was nonprofit and.
There was no guarantee when Sterling approached us, and we had other people approach us. Well, we did. We approached other people to try to get them to come in with shows, Sterling and and major promoters. Sterling was the only one that was willing to come in, and he had no guarantee whatsoever whether it was going to be a total flop or not. So we looked at it from the standpoint that this was a good thing to get the ball rolling for commercial activities in the bowl, shows in the bowl. And if it didn't work out, it didn't work out, and everybody was going to part their ways and go home. But there had to be a little bit give and take because Sterling was putting all their money on the line to produce these shows, not knowing whether they were ever going to make a dime. So the terms were lucrative. I think after four years of experience, now three, but let's say four, when the contract is up, we're going to have a lot more history on the bowl. And I think then we're going to be able to negotiate, I wouldn't say a fairer contract, but a more customary contract perhaps, of venues that have a history. But we had no history at the time we entered into that contract. So I just want the the council to take that into consideration when we say we want to. I mean, I have no idea the the two shows that they've already produced. I have no idea how much money they made in them. I don't know whether they're making thirty five hundred dollars.
Well, I don't want to argue the point. I mean, I'm just saying, we know.
But if you want, I suppose we could say, we'll extend it, but we want a flat rate of thirty five hundred dollars for you to do these shows.
That's.
Yeah.
I mean, I suppose we can do that. I don't see anything wrong with that. Do you, Matt?
No, that'd be lawful.
Yeah.
The contract provides for ten minimums and a fee max.
But I just wanted to kind of give you a little background that that Sterling kind of stepped up at a time when we wanted to promote that bowl.
Right.
And we felt that it was not only good for the city to make a little bit of money for the maintenance of the bowl, but it was also going to be good for our restaurants and other things that are going on within the city.
Yeah, yeah, there there's multiple benefits and also as what Amber pointed out.
I agree. It's just, but I I'm sorry.
Okay, my my question is, the two shows they're adding are the two ones that are sold out, that are will be sold out.
They're making money, obviously.
Yeah, but so I don't know how you came on this figure. I think we might come out bitter with the sixty forty split because they're going to. You're you're a hundred percent sure?
Yes. Basically, absolutely, yes. We are that is this would be better than we've been coming out on the existing system because of the comp tickets and because of the net calculations that we really the un-audited net calculations.
Okay, so did you come upon this like a fifty fifty split or?
I came up with it by thinking about the, I believe, the the per per sold the per ticket fee is two dollars and three dollars. So three times of, let's say, a thousand roughly is three thousand plus a little. So just the normal if you're if you're selling it, if you're selling out, you got a little right over just under a thousand people. Let's just say a thousand round. That's three thousand dollars facilities fee roughly if you're paying.
I'll take your word for it.
Okay, roughly. And then I added a little extra for profit from the operation.
Okay. The city manager?
So that would be a flat fee, no additional maintenance fee. That would be that would be the whole check that they would write to the city.
Thirty five hundred dollars going into the facility fund.
Per show.
For these three shows.
Into the facility's fund.
That's my proposal.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, could we could we recognize Luann if she wants to add something to this? Did you want to say? Wait, all right, wait, maybe you're not Luann, but.
Come on, let's let's stop. Come on, guys. Okay, through the chair. This is this is it. We are not going to keep going back and forth between deliberating and then having discussions with everybody in the audience because we will never get through the agenda. You may proceed, and then we're going to you go through the chair.
Whatever proposal you have, I'll have to take it back to Lance and we'll take it from there.
Okay.
So that's that's my proposal.
I missed what she said.
She said she would take it back to Sterling.
She'll take it back to Lance, and Lance will either agree to it or not.
So my my proposal, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we grant.
Please, please do. Make pardon me. Make a motion, and then we'll get a second, and then we'll continue this.
I'm going to go ahead and make the motion along the lines of of what I passed out, but changing the word two to three. Additional shows for the concert season with provision that the city shall receive a flat rate sum of thirty five hundred dollars per waiver request approved to be allocated one hundred percent to the facilities R and M fund. And the council will take up a full annual report in contract assessment as a agenda item no later than the end of October 2018.
Is there a second to that? I'll second it. Okay, Randy.
So I just wanted to to comment on the flat fee. I'm not opposed to it, but there's also another way of going about it. And we actually have a users fee for a commercial event. I believe it's sixteen hundred dollars. And you could still do the same event ticket price as three dollars for the maintenance fat, you know, the maintenance fee. So there's ways of doing it that already exist. If we wanted to go by the actual users of anyone else, any commercial event using our facility, that's another way of doing it. So I'd like to to just allow that discussion to take place along with Bill's motion so that when you do negotiate with Sterling, that they're looking at the options that are available as one, a unique vendor, and two, as a, you know, what I would say, a an outstanding provider of music in our community, that that should be taken into consideration also.
Yeah.
So I don't think there's any there isn't any one thing here, although I do agree in principle that a flat fee is something that we should be looking at in the future for our contract.
Yeah.
So we eliminate all of this sparring of tickets and waiving this and getting that. And we just need to address that.
Mr. Mayor, if another commercial outfit came to us and said that, well, of course, Sterling has the exclusive on it.
That's correct.
But if there was a commercial show that didn't conflict with Sterling.
Correct.
What would we charge them?
Well, for assuming Sterling granted that, right, we would go back to the fee schedule that.
Which is sixteen hundred dollars plus. How much per ticket?
Three dollars.
Three dollars.
Correct.
So we I don't see any reason not to just use that.
Well, so so.
I mean, that would be Sterling would have to approve another person using it. Well, now they can approve themselves using it.
So if you penciled that out, and you just based it on an average of a thousand people attending, at three dollars is three thousand, plus the sixteen hundred dollar user fee for the facility, that's what, forty six thousand?
Forty six hundred.
Forty six hundred.
Might be nice forty six thousand.
Bill's number is at thirty something.
Thirty five hundred.
I actually I had a number of thirty three fifty because I I averaged, based on my knowledge of the bowl, that they're averaging probably about seven hundred and fifty right now, you know, give or take a few. So that's the number I looked at, along with the sixteen hundred dollars. So mine was more thirty three fifty if we're going to do a flat rate. But I just think all of this is open to negotiation, and I think that we should allow the city manager, who's in control of the management of the bowl, and Sterling to actually vet this and then come back for our approval.
I I would agree, but tonight we need to approve these three waived dates.
Yes.
My motion is for this number for these three.
Okay.
Well, my motion is just.
It's moved and seconded.
Oh, do we have to vote?
Yeah, well, we unless you're planning to amend the motion.
Yeah, I well, we're still in discussion, right?
We have a motion on the table.
There's a motion on the floor, and you're you're entitled to amend it if you have an amendment you want to offer. But otherwise, we'll vote on the motion.
I would I would I'm not sure if I know how to amend it. I would approve the staff recommendation. I want to, you know, to grant the request from Sterling Van Uff Ventures to add three additional shows, right, for the 2018 Libby Bowl concert season with the addition of the comments made by Councilmember Haney. I'm more comfortable with that because I don't.
What does that mean, the comment?
Well, I don't remember the the figures that that he cited just seem more fair to me.
Okay, let me see if I can restate the motion for you. To approve the three additional dates outside the contract and to use the normal fee and rentals schedule that would otherwise be used as opposed to the flat fee. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, because.
I I'm not accepting that amendment.
Okay.
You're not?
No.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so we then is there any further debate on Bill's motion?
Nope.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Blas?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay, motion motion is carried. Very good. Now, that's all outside, and there's not precedent for anything. And we'll read we'll get a full report as Bill suggested, and then we can sit down and work with Sterling on what is.
Yes, I have no problem with the with the timeline of getting something back no later than the end of October. That's fine.
Great.
Thank you.
One final thought, unless it's too late, Mayor. Just can you let us know who's running the bowl?
Sure. The the manager of the bowl is through the city manager's office. Right now, we have a contract with the Ojai Music Festival for the staff support. This is to do the coordination with the for the calendar, for the event prep, post, all that type of work that that is done by staff in order to coordinate with both Sterling and with the other users of the bowl that right now is being handled through a contract through the Ojai Music Festival.
So that was I thought that contract ended in June.
No, the contract, no, did not end in June.
Okay, can one of us get a copy of it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So can I ask, council protocol that we discussed prior to this meeting, we can't discuss while we're while the motion's on the table?
No, most you can discuss a motion on the table, but you can't change the motion unless you move to amend the motion. That's what parliamentary.
Okay.
So if you if you like the basis of it, but want to change the time or the amount or something, you're entitled to do that. Then you get a second.
Okay.
And then we vote on the amendment first, and then we vote on the main motion. A simpler way is a substitute motion if everybody's in agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I hope it's clear that I wasn't opposed to the three additional events.
I think I was.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is designating a voting delegate for the League of California Cities Conference. I think what's in the in the folder is not the right place.
Yes, we we noted that today. Unfortunately, we got a page swapped out in the final pack of preparation. We did double check the agenda. The agenda does have it listed correctly, so I know I know not to speak for the.
The conference is in September in Long Beach.
It is, in September of 2018, yes.
Who plans to attend?
So I I have been the the attendee for the last two years, and I'll take one more year.
Thank you.
Okay, you want to go and be the voter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, actually, you get to meet all of these other council people from all these cities. It's actually a lot of fun, so.
I don't have time to go to Sacramento.
No, it's actually.
This here is Long Beach.
Oh, it's in Long Beach. I thought it said Sacramento. Oh, Long Beach convincers.
You want to be my alternate?
Sure, I'll be your alternate.
Yeah, we can have three go, right? We can have all of us go if we want.
Everybody can go.
Yeah.
You can all attend the conference. You can you can designate one primary and one alternate for the voting.
I'll be an alternate.
Yeah, okay, so Randy is moved. If there's no objection, Randy will be the voting delegate, and Bill will be his second, his backup. You can hold Randy's jacket.
Got a place to stay in San Pedro.
I agree. These conferences are fun. I've been to them.
In Long Beach?
No, in Sacramento.
Okay, if there's no objection, so ordered. Let's go to the next item. Consideration of funding requests from the Ojai Valley Museum and the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So back tonight, we have members of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition and also represented from the the Ojai Valley Museum here. We discussed during the budgets, the community outreach monies. Money has been allocated that would be able to cover the entirety of these requests. But of course, council has not had a chance to actually look at the specifics in the work plan, so that is what is before the council this evening. Break it down for you very quickly here. We have the ask from the museum, which is basically continuing an ask for the continuing of the same level of support to offset the operating expenses of the museum. They've kept that request at sixty thousand dollars. That was the same number that they had requested in previous years to off to offset the operating expenses. City manager is recommending that the council grant that in full because that seems rather straightforward. And again, we're just really keeping status quo with what we had done in previous years. So we see I see no reason to deviate from that. But of course, that's up to council. And secondly, we have the more detailed work plan request from the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. There are a number of different aspects to that. I know the members of the Green Coalition are here this evening to give this council a presentation on what it is that they hope to achieve in this coming fiscal year. We have to answer any questions.
Mayor Johnson?
Okay. Yes, Bill.
Am I recognized?
Yes.
This is two elements of the community outreach budget. And I believe that council directed or asked that we have an opportunity to look at the community outreach budget as a whole. In other words, including the opportunity for maybe council to have put some requests in for council considerations in that overall community outreach budget. Will that be coming back to us at a future agenda item to a general discussion of the community outreach budget, including possibility for council to make requests, which we have been some of us have indicated we might be interested in, but we've never had an opportunity to make them?
No, that was not staff's understanding, so that was not our our intent to come back with that. That certainly counts something that council could take up. Just to give you the quick lay of the land in terms of the money that was appropriated in the budget this year, basically, we counted up, you know, we earmarked sixty for the museum, fifty thousand for the Green Coalition, and then there's three thousand dollars that is put in there also for the to assist with the the Independence Day parade and a thousand dollars that we have traditionally funding through the the two one one program.
I understand. The point being is that I I thought we had asked for council to look at the community outreach budget as a whole. And while we do all we do all we all we approved was the total amount.
And the total amount, including these items and what the city manager just mentioned, there was no increase in the community outreach budget. It was.
That's correct.
Flat amount, so if there's.
I guess my.
Closer to a hundred and fifty thousand?
Again, I I thought it was a hundred and thirty or something, but nevertheless, my point being that at some point, I think the intent was that, at least I felt as a council member, that there's some issues that I that are. that there's some issues that I, uh, that are in play, that I had brought up, that I wanted to discuss as part of the community outreach budget. But if we never have it before us as a whole, we can never discuss them.
Well, that, the, um, during the budget process, I think we may be mixing two different things. The community outreach was simply a composite of the previously approved, or the sort of precedent setting, although I don't like that term, but the previously approved community outreach, reach programs. Nobody proposed any additional ones. There is a contingency fund within the budget that covers things such as salaries and unforeseen things that we'll have to deal with. At that time, if there is adequate funds, or the council sets priorities within that, that some of that money might possibly be addressing what you're, what you're taking...
Well, I, I guess that's my point. I thought, I thought our own, the only thing we'd approved is a total budget number, period.
There was a total, well, no, there's a, we approved a budget, and there was a, uh, an amount for community outreach, which the city manager has just described. There is also an amount in the budget that's called contingency. It's a fairly small amount of money that will be used for a number of things. We just did not determine what that money was gonna be used for.
My point is, I believe we only approved a total community outreach total.
That wasn't my understanding.
That, that's, that's what, that's what the budget motion, we discussed this, and that was the budget motion. We have, we approved a community outreach total.
That is what has just been described to you, I believe.
It didn't have any approval for parts of the total, just the total.
That is correct. Are you suggesting that you don't want to give money to, what, the Fourth of July Parade? This is the bulk of it, is it not?
Correct, the bulk of it is.
Okay, what are, repeat for all of our benefits, what, what is in this particular, you know, what we call the community outreach appropriation?
Right, so, what we, we built that number with, we, we recommended the total with the idea that would be able to fund, uh, the, if council desired, the full amount of the request from the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, the fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollars in requests for the admin support from the museum, three thousand dollars for the Independence Day Committee support, and one thousand for, uh, for the city to support the 2-1-1 line.
My, my point is that, that's the staff recommendation of how to use the total.
Correct.
But we don't have the, we have the total, but we don't have the full staff recommendation before us. We just have these two entries.
Uh, you are correct.
Okay.
I, maybe I'm missing something, Bill.
You are correct, and apologize, I, and perhaps it was, perhaps a little bit of over-assumption on part of staff. I, I believe we touched on those during, during the, the budget discussions. And I suppose, I'll take the mea culpa here, assumption on our part, because we didn't hear objection from council, that we assumed that the council was gonna continue to support the three for the, which is our assumption.
Just a sec, just for simplicity...
Approve the total.
Just for, Bill, just for simplicity, what is the total dollar amount for the outreach? That, which it seems to be what Bill's getting at.
What's the total we approved?
Maybe double-check that.
Well, you, you just, you, was there more than...
I wanna, I wanna double-check what's in the budget, 'cause I don't wanna misspeak at this point, so...
Well, you can't misspeak by too much. You just identified, I believe, the elements. Give me a rough idea.
Well, what I identified was a hundred and fourteen thousand.
That's not what the number is that we approved, I don't believe. It could be.
Okay, if, if there's more than that in there, Bill, then there's...
See amount?
Yes, it's correct. It's simple math, it's simple math.
No, not the math, what we approved in the meeting, by minute.
Yes, I, that's, I don't, I know that we, if I went back on the tape, I believe we will see that we, because we didn't increase, that we approved those two amounts. That's my understanding.
No, we didn't approve any components. We approved a total amount. The mayor's question is, what is the current total amount we approved?
And it sounds like it's around a hundred and twenty thousand. You think it's more than that? If it is...
I don't know.
I know, you think it's more than...
I, probably wrong.
No, but, but, but you are suspecting that it is more than...
I just wonder what the total is we approved. I don't remember.
Manager went to grab a copy of the budget.
You're a hard guy to agree with, Bill, but, okay, that's all I've asked for, too.
I agree.
Because I don't, I think what, what you and I have talked about on occasion is, is the work plans, and the, the bulk of this is really the museum and the Green Coalition. And they're in here, right?
I agree.
Yes.
So, we can deal with those, and then the balance of it, uh, doesn't seem like it amounts to a whole lot. And if it does, then you've got another opportunity.
I agree. I just asked when that opportunity's gonna be to go move beyond these two components, because we, we approved a total on the basis that we were gonna look at it as a whole.
Okay.
The question is, why wasn't it all brought back at one time versus...
Okay, and, and our manager has apologized, and so let us, let us...
And it's not a life-death, I mean, it's just so routine.
That's right. Okay, uh, so, what, what is your pleasure? Do you wanna continue the item? Or do you wanna deal with these?
The manager just went to grab his copy of the budget, which perhaps can answer the math, the what was approved question, so you might give him a chance to turn.
Well, what is, Bill, what is your pleasure as a voting member here?
Well, I, my pleasure with it, we take these items up separately, the Ojai Valley Museum and the Green Coalition. And then, uh, I wanted, there are some issues I wanted to bring up for possible inclusion, depending on what our total budget was, and at a future date. It's not on the agenda today.
Okay, well, it sounds like that you, you have some additional requests that may or may not be within the approved budget. And we'll have to find that out, okay?
And so I...
Yeah, unless you're planning to, you, you wanna...
I don't know, I, I just think we ought to take up two and three separately. I just, I think it's, it's not the right way to do things. If, if, if this was supposed to come back to us as a complete, uh, community action budget that we allocated in total with the discussion of how we wanted to divide it up. That's how we've done it in the past years.
Yeah.
I am complete...
Didn't do it that way last year, but, okay, I, I'm not disagreeing with your, your approach, so let's, uh, I don't know what's taken so long.
You're not, you're not.
Move on to the next item.
Well, how about this, while we're waiting for that, can we have, um, the museum come up and speak to their budget?
Okay, so, but wait, I wanna be clear.
But, please, okay, you asked the question.
Right.
What is the pleasure of the council? Do you wish to, uh, Bill is the one who has concerns. Are you okay with...
I'm fine with getting, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they've waited all evening, so...
That's fine.
Susan, Susan, please.
No objection.
We haven't yet turned it over to the audience. Okay, there's no objection, so, Brian, come on up. We're gonna talk about your budget at this point.
Yep, I'm just gonna be real quick. Uh, in the package, uh, that you received with the attachments, uh, you received a spreadsheet that was only through March. Uh, a month after that, I brought you April's numbers. Uh, a month ago, in the first meeting of June, I was fortuitous to be able to bring you May's numbers. And I had hoped through some miracle that I might have June's numbers for you, but, hey, we're on a year-end, and everybody understands that year-ends take a little bit longer. So, I'm happy to, once we have June's numbers, to get those to you, but I don't think June is gonna affect us very much. We're pretty level. So, again, thank you for your support. I'm here to a, answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
So, Brian, I just have, um, one question for you. Your total expenditures here, if I'm reading this correctly, are sixty-five thousand and sixty ninety-nine cents?
That, that was a projection that we had, uh...
And where are you on the projections right now?
Uh, well, as of the last projection, when I gave it to you a month ago, I think we were showing somewhere in the, like, sixty-four thousand, six hundred range, because at that time, we were only having to estimate one more month. Again, that estimate for the month is an average of the prior eleven months. And so, um, I think we'll be pretty close to that sixty-four, sixty-seven range.
So, um, so my thoughts are, um, if the funding's available, then I'd like to include that or up his request to actually cover the, the total operating expenses for the museum for this year.
Uh, I will know the, we have our finance committee meeting that's coming up this Tuesday, uh, ten o'clock. And so, I will have the numbers before then, and we will talk about those numbers in the finance committee meeting. So, again, I can, uh, send a copy of that to, uh, I've been funneling them through Rudy. I know Rudy, I know he's the finance guy. Uh, so I'm happy to send that to you on Tuesday, if that would work for you.
Thank you.
Steve?
So, I did check the budget, and we do have one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in the approved budget for community outreach. That is the total.
Okay. I'll make a motion if...
And of that, every dollar was identified as to where it might go, and we have the rights, as you pointed out, to look at that and decide, are we gonna spend less or more? If Randy's idea of spending more in the museum, then it needs to come out of one of the other budgets that are listed here, uh, so...
I, I'm gonna move approval of the sixty thousand dollars for the Ojai Valley Museum to request to offset the museum's operating costs.
I'll second that. Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the museum budget. My understanding is, what, what in effect we're doing is, we're paying the bills up to a certain amount, right? And they're covering whatever... Yeah, right, okay, so...
Okay, good.
Okay, um...
All right, vote?
Paul, any?
No.
If not, okay, does we have a, I guess, is it a roll call for a money issue?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
No.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, the next budget, Mr. City Manager.
So, I know we have the members of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and they have a, a brief presentation that they'd like to give. I know it's already ten to ten. I don't think we thought we were gonna get to this item this late, so hopefully, we can condense that amount down as much as possible.
I actually do not have a presentation. I just have, uh, some visuals that may or may not be helpful in the discussion. Um, but I am definitely here to answer...
You wanna introduce yourself?
Oh, of course. Todd Cosart, Executive Director of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition.
Remember, this is televised.
That's right.
For your fans, huh, Todd?
And it is, uh, yeah, I'm better, Jack. Um, and I, you know, it's my honor and pleasure to be able to answer any questions you may have. We were, um, approached by the city manager, um, last week to provide, um, some more detailed numbers on the particular initiatives that we're hoping to be able to, um, to integrate into our projects for this year, specifically related to water security and, um, the Ojai Community Demonstration Garden. And those should have, you should have received those as an addendum. Um, and I'd be happy to, to go through some of those figures if, uh...
I, excuse me, I do have hard copies for anybody who did not, that does not have that, right, or printed that out, so...
You should have, you should have...
I have this one, I don't know if I have...
These numbers that...
This one here, 2018 fiscal.
Right, but this is, this is the addendum that they provided, I think, on Monday of this week.
Right.
So, we just, we received this after the packet went out from the, from the coalition.
Right, and...
Yeah, it is different than what we have in the packet.
Yes. So, what we did is, we attached numbers to each of the projects, um, that we are hoping to accomplish this year related to water security and, um, related to the Ojai Community Demonstration Garden. So, in, in that sense, and so, we gave them sort of nomenclature, WS-01, 02, 03, 04, and then each one has a number. And if you were to continue on the addendum, um, we included the, um, the, the specific narratives as well for each of those, um, project items, and, um, that explains what, you know, briefly what we intend to do and how we intend to use that funding. And then it also, um, sort of duplicates the, the numbers that we're talking about.
Thank you for the detail.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we, I think we've received ten letters in support. You know, this was carried over, right? Last time, yeah, so I didn't bring them, yeah.
So, there may be, there may be some questions that you may have that are specifically related to, um, these, these projects. Um, we've went over them, you know, in depth, um, you know, as a, um, as an organization. Uh, and, you know, in terms of water security, I guess one of the things that I would like to emphasize is that we, um, have ten years of, of experience in addressing water security issues in the Ojai Valley. And we, um, when we began to develop our projects, the ten, eleven projects that we have ambitiously set aside for this year, um, we made a great effort to not overlap into the work that the city council is already doing, um, but to complement them in the areas where we're strong. For us, the critical areas are education, um, best practices, um, and, and metric evaluation. So, each of these water, you know, each of these is designed specifically to allow us to address those issues of educating. And this is very specific to the Ojai city. I would also like to add, we also are working with the Ventura River Water District. Some of these, um, you know, some of the strategies that we use with them have over, will overlap quite well in the city, but we're ready to roll them out specifically to benefit the people in the city of Ojai.
Um, may, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? Um, could you explain your, um, as I was at the Restoration and Resilience Council Saturday that you host?
Yeah.
And then you just, we discussed that you might support or work with Carnegie Mellon? That might be interesting for the council to hear.
The Restoration and Resilience Council was, um, a, a grassroots responsive council that developed after the Thomas Fire. Um, and it was specifically addressed, um, issues that were related to, you know, how can we create a fire-resilient, um, Ojai Valley? What, what can we do as, as members of the community to move our valley and our community in the direction of, of both water security and fire resilience? Um, so, one of the things that we've been doing in that process with the, with the council is looking at, at some, uh, strategies that are very similar to what the Transition Design, Carnegie Mellon Institute, their, their university is proposing for the city. So, one, we have approached, um, the Design Institute, um, and have been involved in a number of their workshops previously. Um, and we're hoping to be able to partner with them in a meaningful way to be able to, um, to help facilitate that dialogue and that transition process in the city when they, when they come. They are in touch with us. We are also collaboratively, um, looking for funding for, for, um, that transition design process. Um, and so, we're also hoping to partner with them as they're looking for funding resources as well.
Thank you.
Uh, because there are resources in California for transition design that they may not be aware of, um, being from, from the East Coast. Does that help?
It helped me.
Okay.
Any questions to Todd? Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, this is very good report, thank you.
And, you know, and much improved from past cycles. I very much appreciate that.
Outstanding, outstanding.
I did have a question of Todd that just occurred to me, Mayor. Give me the privilege, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Question of Todd, okay.
Hope I can answer.
When we're, when we're, uh, I, I know there's a couple of things, you're both in terms of the partner with the watershed.
Right.
And the, uh, sponsor of a, uh, Ojai Water, uh, follow-up research article by Kit Stoltz.
Right.
My only very, very slight concern, okay?
Related to the article?
It, related to both of those activities.
What was the first one again, please?
The first was the partnership with Sierra Watershed Progressive.
Yeah.
Is that, since we're funding this, we would want any promulgations or statements of, of policy towards water issues to be consistent with adopted council policy statements. We won't, we'd want, if we're funding an agency to, you know, basically to do outreach, basically on behalf of the council, on behalf of the city.
Correct.
You'd want those statements that are being made to be consistent with the city's policy statements and policy positions on water.
Of course.
And the reason I point this out is that I've, I've heard statements by members of the Green Coalition that they thought that there was a moral, ethical issue with diversifying our water supplies outside this watershed, which is not consistent with the city's policy positions. And I just want to be careful about that, that, you know, if we're funding a policy statement or a policy analysis, it should be consistent with the policy positions adopted by this council.
Can I respond?
Yes.
So the short answer is that in our opinion, we are, are very serious about the fact that we represent, that we are one of the organizations that represents the face of the city. So I think that we would be, that if there is a way that we can be able to be confident that that is not going to happen, that we're not going to, to cross paths with the directed opinions and, and.
Majority vote adopted.
Policies of, yes, that, that the city's already adopted, then I'd like to talk a little bit more with the city about the best way to avoid that happening.
It's just a careful, it's a cautionary note.
Yeah, and having said that, you know, especially as it relates to Kit's article, you know, that certainly is something that we can put to the city for review before we do publish it. I, I find Kit to be incredibly fair as a journalist, so I am not too concerned about that.
I agree, I'm not criticizing anyone, I just.
Yeah.
I have noticed that there are differences between some of the policy positions, members of the Green Coalition say, you know, they're espousing on behalf of the Green Coalition and some of the policy positions adopted by the city, particularly on the issue of diversifying our water supply beyond the existing watershed.
Right, and I'm hoping that that's part of a healthy dialogue that's associated with that and not, you know, stated opinion on the part of the Green Coalition.
Mr. Mayor?
If I'm ready.
So, I just have two concerns, are the, your overlapping want to participate in Carnegie Mellon. As not just a participant, but as something greater than, which that concerns me. And then the same thing with the Sierra Watershed Progressive, is your relationship with them when we have a contract with them to provide specific services, and my concern is that you'll piggyback on what we're paying for rather than paying for it yourself, so I have a concern with that. Then the biggest one I have here is the biggest part of your water security budget is the comprehensive residential onsite water-wise evaluations. Yet there, I don't see anything in your thing for any type, I don't know what the criteria is for an onsite evaluation, that'd be nice to know. And because it doesn't say anything in here in your, in your paragraphs, is the campaign, the campaign will include educational informational events and presentations, water-wise field trips, demonstration workshops, including our planned water-wise green home tour based on fifty projected site visits. So I don't know what you're, I don't know what you're doing here for five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think, I totally understand what you're talking about there. That looks like a misprint that should have gone into the previous paragraph that I edited and I must not have gotten to.
I'm, I'm just saying it's the biggest part, and I would think that.
It is, and, you know, what I'd like to say is essentially what the site evaluation, and there's, is the first page up on there, the water-wise site evaluation was a, the prototype for the, the site evaluations was developed by Renee Roth for the Ventura River Water District. It was rolled out as a prototype last year. And essentially, it does involve doing outreach in the community, and, and so a lot of the focus is going to be, will have to do with outreach. The site evaluations themselves take up anywhere between, you know, two hours and a little bit longer depending on, on the depth of, you know, the, the amount of time that we spend with the residents, but I would say about two hours is what we sort of have budgeted there. Then we have, then we have the follow-up, which includes, which includes data entry because we're also creating a database that is going to allow us to monitor all the, the site evaluations that they do in terms of the water-wise types of retrofitting and additions that they've created on their properties. And then there is follow-up. So our hope is to be able to, we figure that it's about, somewhere about a hundred dollars per site visit is what it is, what it will, will cost us to be able to do those site evaluations. And I'm happy to give you, actually in our previous report for the year, I did attach a copy of Renee's site evaluation that was used with the Ventura River Water District, and we've modified it so that it is a little bit more adaptable to Ojai. But we, we figured, you know, we really, we're ambitious, we really want to get at least fifty people. The Ventura River Water District has said this is, they feel this is a really effective process for educating the community on a one-to-one basis on, for residential water-wise management and, and their, on their residential properties, so we think it's going to work really well.
So the question is, are the fifty sites in Ojai?
Oh, yeah.
In city proper?
Yeah.
Not in the county?
No, this is city, this is city we're talking about.
And your, your personnel that's performing this, are they licensed, are they, what are they?
They're going to, they're trained and certified to do this type of watershed management evaluation of people's properties, yes.
Who provides?
But they're not to do the work. This is strictly evaluation to be able to.
I understand that, as, as a licensed contractor, I do these all the time.
Yeah, no, they wouldn't be, we would not.
I'm just questioning, I'm just questioning again, the expenditure of the money, it's the biggest amount, and that, are you, are you having licensed people or certified people? And I'm hearing that they're certified.
They would be certified.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah. And the only, the only thing I would respond to about the Sierra Watershed Progressive is that my conversations with the Sierra Watershed Progressive is that at a certain point, if, if it is possible that they will want to do similar types of outreach in the Ojai community that are our strengths, and in that case, they may come to us to ask us to be able to do those kinds of, of outreach, you know, approaches that they believe are going to be part of their, you know, their analysis and their, the ocean-friendly systems that they think we're going to be able to help.
Susan?
Okay, let me see if I can gather my thoughts. First, the comment was made that certain members of, first of all, I'm the liaison, as you know, but for members of the audience, to the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and a comment was made about moral or ethical, there was a concern that somebody made.
That was my comment.
Oh, that was your comment, yeah. Well, first of all, remember, it's a Green Coalition, it's a coalition of people, many diverse people with different perspectives and expertise in various fields. I personally, as a council member, have moral, when I hear what I consider moral, ethical issues are environmental impact on wildlife, you know, I think those are genuine concerns. It isn't, it isn't a matter of making a policy statement.
Do you have any more questions to Todd?
No, I just wanted to clarify that, but yeah, no, I wanted to say when Randy said, because I've been going to all the meetings.
But let's say that for deliberation as opposed to the gathering information.
Okay, I'll save the rest for deliberation, because I wanted to comment about.
Okay, we'll be right to it. I have one question. What, what is the total Green Coalition budget? Is, are you on a fiscal year of June or July to June?
We just switched over to, yeah, we just switched over to June to July.
And your annual operation told us what?
We're about seventy-seven, seventy-seven thousand.
Okay, so we represent about two-thirds of your, your budget, okay? Because I was under the impression that we were contracting with an entity that existed separately and we were buying services as opposed to the fifteen percent or whatever it is for overhead, and so we're more like a stockholder or, or a partner in the deal, it looks like, okay.
I apologize. Several signed the tax return, so it must have been closer to a hundred.
We're fifty percent, then, okay, we're a big piece of it, okay?
Yeah, and, and I think you'll find also in that addendum that actually the numbers do not, the numbers exceed the amount that, that the, that the city is, is providing us, and those are, that's money that we will be, have to go after and, and find from other funding sources, which we are fully expecting to be able to do.
Okay, other comments or questions? Okay, fine, thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Susan, you wanted to continue with your.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Randy's concern, Mayor Protem Randy's concern about piggybacking on these two, on the Sierra Watershed and Carnegie Mellon. I see it more, I would use the term support, rather than piggybacking, they're offering support, and I, I was present at some of the conversations about this because they know the community, and they, you know, they have, they know the resources and I, I think, and, and we're all, and every, and these are two, the, the Carnegie Mellon, that's going to be a big community effort, right? So it's appropriate that the Green Coalition would offer support.
Okay, do we have, do we have a motion at this point?
All right, my mo, I'll make a motion, if I can go back to the, my motion is to fund the request, oh wait, hang on, I would, okay, my motion would be to approve the tasks in the Ojai Valley Green Coalition Work Plan and the funding of a maximum of fifty thousand. Is that inadequate?
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got moved and seconded here. Any other comments? Okay, my comment is, is that I will support this, this year, and depending on what the future holds, you may not have to deal with me anymore, but in the, in the coming years.
True for four of us.
Yeah, right, yeah, I'm not alone in that. In the coming year, not, this is named or directed specifically to the Green Coalition, but just in general, community outreach programs are, are good, and, but as I always say, we're the four-point-three square miles in the middle of the valley, and if things get tough, we have a lot of mandatory responsibilities for the community, so these kinds of things will be looked at during tight years much more carefully, and I know Todd's new on the job, and he seems to be doing a really great job of getting us documentation and kind of showing where the money's going to go, and I guess I would expect next year to see what we got for the money, you know, as far as the metrics and, you know, how much do we actually do? Because this past year, we had that little back and forth over the use of the water money, and that's near and dear to my heart because we are also spending money that I don't even know if it's in the budget, or we're going to have to cut something else at some point to pay for the expansion if we don't raise, we have to go out hat in hand and raise money from other jurisdictions to help us because water, generally speaking, isn't restricted just to the city boundaries, it, there is a, an aquifer and a water district, so we need to partner with everybody, and we're partnering with you guys now, but we, well, at least I, I would like to see more results from the previous year, and that's not fair to ask you of that at this point, but at the end of next year, if we, if we meet again, you've been advised, okay? So if there's no further discussion, let's have a vote on the motion.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, go forth and multiply. Thank you.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes, Bill.
Could it be in order, or would that be future agenda items for me to talk about some, coming back for additional discussion of the community outreach budget and additional requests from council?
Okay, why don't you hold on until we just, we wrap up.
Future agenda items?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're, we'll go now to introduction of ordinance, amending the cultural, the noise ordinance. Mr. City Manager, is there anything further we need to know on this?
No, I'm, on item six.
Or on the noise.
Oh, no, we're on the cultural.
That was in consent, right. That was in consent.
Item six is the Cultural and Historic Preservation Ordinance.
Oh, okay, oh my God.
It's not ten thirty yet.
I'll, I'll tell you right off the bat, I'm not prepared to do anything tonight on this because of a late-breaking missile that I got from one of my colleagues here at about three this afternoon, I could not get through it fast as I tried to read it, so it seems like there's an awful lot to be dealt with.
I'm able to continue the item.
Did we all get that?
There, there's probably a number of speakers cards, because I see a lot of.
Oh, yeah, well, we got, yeah.
But hang on a second, did we all receive that?
Yes.
Mine was an email thing.
Was it, did it, did it go to my city council address?
Yes.
I don't, I looked and looked, I better go look some more.
Okay, well, I think we, yeah, all these good people who waited this long, I think we should hear.
Well, I agree.
Yeah, the comments, then we'll, okay, the first good person, Brian.
Huh, this afternoon.
Brian Akins, now Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. My main purpose here was again similar to the purpose when I attended the meeting that you had in May to answer questions that came up in, in talking about this. Just to note, this process began, I gave you a little bit of a history last time I talked to you, I researched it a bit more. This process with the renewal, or the suggestions began December tenth, two thousand and fifteen, that's when we reviewed the information that was put together by the Committee of Terry Hill, Rose Boggs, and Craig Walker. And so we're pursuing on that, and so I know there'll be other issues and questions that will come up, but I'll be sitting on the side ready to answer if you need any answers, or I'll be back for the next meeting. I usually am.
I look forward to that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Steve Quillacy West, Eucalyptus Street in the city. I've been through this, excuse me, this suggested change to the ordinance, and I find a lot of good in it. I have about a half a dozen specific points where I would take issue or state a concern, and in the interests of time, I would be happy to write them out and provide them, but perhaps I could just synopsize them here for you to give you something to think about in the meantime. And I am referring specifically to the red line version, Exhibit A to Attachment A, and I will go through it paragraph, by paragraph number, so that you can follow along in your red line version and see what I'm talking about. Four dash eight point zero three, this is a question that has come up with a number of different commissions, but I think it applies equally well to the HPC. I would recommend, and this is a change that is not in the recommended new ordinance, I would, I would recommend that not more than two non-resident members be on the commission out of seven. The reasoning there is a quorum is four. Right now, we could have three or four non-residents comprising a quorum of four and have people that do not live in the city making rules for people that do live in the city. At, at two and two, at least there's a balance there between city residents and city non-residents for promulgating policy on behalf of the HPC. In four dash eight point zero four definitions, there's discussion of major and minor work permits, and it should clarify, in my opinion, approval and issuance, there is no mention of issuance either place, no mention of the CDD, the Community Development Director's discretion regarding major work permits, for example. It talks about permits approved by the HPC or approved by the council, I believe. Second, in that same paragraph, there is a survey of proposed landmarks, it's not mentioned anywhere else except in that paragraph, and it doesn't say land, proposed landmarks or items deserving of landmark status, it could be any list of structures and sites, and I believe this is an already existing list that was referred informally to as a windshield survey. It applied to my personal property and said Austin Pierpont, question mark, alongside my address, and it cost me seventeen hundred dollars for a historic resource report to establish that HPC would not have any interest in my property. I have several more, I'll be happy to write them out for you.
That's great, thank you, Steve.
You'll have the city manager distribute.
I'll do it paragraph by paragraph.
And circulate to all the council, through the city, through the city manager.
Okay, Don, are you still out there? Yeah.
Good evening, Dawn Tating, thank you for your time on this important matter. I'm going to take kind of a bigger perspective, I believe that Lisa Point and Craig Walker are going to cover some more of the details. Looking at the City of Ojai General Plan, the General Plan states that the city shall attempt to preserve all historical buildings, resources designated by the city council, and shall strive to identify and preserve potential historical resources. The goal of the proposed amendment, amended ordinance before you is to implement the General Plan to identify and preserve historic resources. However, as written, the proposed amendment contains language that may actually lessen protections for historic resources. Some small language issues have a big effect. It is inconsistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties and the City's General Plan, and internally inconsistent with the municipal code itself. The conclusion that the proposed amendment could not result in a potentially significant negative environmental impact on historic resources is not supported by evidence. negative environmental impact on historic resources is not supported by evidence. In fact, the evidence is to the contrary, this amendment may result in harm to historic resources and thus should be subject to review under CEQA. There are two issues, the consistency with the Secretary of Interior Standards. It has been ingrained in previous discussions by the HPC and the council, as well as Section 4-8.02 state that the proposed amendment should be guided by the Secretary of Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties. Section 4-8.15 contains qualifying language, quote, "visible from the public right-of-way." This language is not consistent with Secretary of Interior Standards. The language is ambiguous, and visibility from public right-of-way does not determine or affect historic significance. If I plant a row, a row of trees in front of a historic landmark, since, such as the museum, so no one can see it anymore from the road, can I then alter the landmark? My recommendation would be to delete the qualifying language. The second issue is consistency with the general plan and internal consistency with municipal code. In the interest of time, I'll skip the general plan and go to the municipal code and the functions and the powers of the Historic Preservation Commission, which are before you. To allow the HPC to carry out their functions, I would recommend that Section 4-8.05, found on page 629 of line one of the Red Line, that the qualifying language at the request of the city council or planning commission be deleted, and that in fact, all historic resources reports be remanded to the HPC for review and comment. Additionally, I would recommend adding structures of merit designated by the city council to the permitting process requiring HPC review. In summary, to achieve consistency with the standard of Secretary of Interior Standards and the general plan, internal consistency within the municipal code, and to avoid potentially significant negative environmental impact to historic resources and further review under CEQA, I would recommend the visible from the public right-of-way language be removed, referring all historic resources reports to the HPC, and adding structures of merit as designated by the city council to the permitting process for review by the HPC. I would further recommend that, if you wish, you might want to seek expert opinion. The State Office of Historic Preservation has offered the city directly the option of sending the draft amendment to them, and they would be happy to review and comment on that amendment to get further, further opinion. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dawn. Craig Watt, what?
Quick question, just really quick. How long does that turn around usually?
That I cannot answer, I do not know.
Told you it'd quick.
You're right, it was. Craig? And I've got two more cards after that. Gina McHatten and Elise, I don't know how to pronounce the last name.
Please.
DePoyt?
Yeah. Hi, Craig.
I would just like to start by reiterating what Dawn said about the language on visible from the public right-of-way. I've given you a copy of the, of the standards, the Secretary of the Interior Standards, and they do, if you look at number nine, that's the one that's really affected here because item 4.815 refers to work done on accessory dwellings and additions and non, non-character defining work being, being exempted from the standards. And as you can look at the standards there, if you look at number nine, it lays out the standards for evaluating those kinds of properties. And you'll notice there's nothing in there that exempts buildings or work that's not visible from the public right-of-way. The important thing with historic preservation is, the important question is, should this work, or does this work, impact the historic significance of the property? That's the most important thing, not whether it's visible from the public right-of-way, or whether it's a, a non-character defining part, or, or, yeah, part of the building that they're working on. It's, it's, does it affect the, the historic significant of that building? And only the Historic Preservation Commission can make that kind of determination, and that's what they do when they issue work permits. They evaluate the work, they work with the owners, and then they issue the work permit. If there's an objection, they can bring it to the council. Another thing I have a question about is not providing any kind of protection for buildings that are on the sites of merit. Because I think one of the things I've noticed when you've talked about the cultural resources, and how you don't like to announce where the burial grounds are, because that just tells the public where to go look. And I think unfortunately, if you publish a list of potential landmarks, which is essentially what the sites of merit is, then all that does is encourages a developer to get a demolition permit and just demolish that building. That happened to one of my dad's, one of his masterpiece houses in Los Angeles, is that was put on a list of a potential landmark, and the owner demolished it the next day. So to have some kind of provision, you don't have to have a full set of protections for those properties, but just to say, if it's on that list, you have to come and get it evaluated before you can demolish it or do a major alteration. Anything else you can do, but just to protect it from that demolition. There's a number of other issues that I have here. I really hope that maybe it'll go back. It's been a long time, I know, and I understand the frustration of the commission, because I worked on this when I was on the commission, and here it's still being discussed. But I think the motivation for it was to clarify and to make sure that it wasn't confusing and that you don't have dual standards. And I think that there's some places in this where that happens. Thank you.
Mayor Johnston, I have a question.
Another short one?
Yes. So I don't think we are allowed to have council designate an item to be called a structure of merit in any non-public process. So your point about it being known, I, I think it's absolutely impossible for us to have a council-designated structure of merit without it being part of a public process it so designates.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, I understand that. So I, I know that in the process of discussing it, that's going to get out to the public. But I think once you name it, if there is at least the prohibition against demolishing that without some kind of a process...
I mean, once designated by the council.
Yeah.
I, I agree. And then, could you provide all of your comments in writing to us to help us work through this?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Gina, with Elise on deck.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Gina McHatten. I live in downtown Ojai, and I'm the newest commissioner on the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm, I want to speak to you about the ordinance. This item obviously has made rounds for years and years, especially pertaining to the right-of-way, but it's new to me. So when it was approved by the HPC during the April meeting, it was my second meeting. We were just at a minimum quorum of four people, and so it wasn't really discussed. It was my understanding when we did that final approval, that it was based on further research on whether or not the wording of the right-of-way viewable from the street aligned with the US Interior Department of the Interior Standards. I now understand that it's been on and off, most recently, once approved and clarified, it was crossed out, it was put back in, it was crossed out, put back in, found its way back on the ordinance, ordinance once again. So we have valuable members with Elise and Dawn and Craig, who literally wrote the books on the history of Ojai. They're very concerned that we're not following the US Department of the Interior. We need to get this right. And if it's been added and crossed out numerous times, there's obviously still some confusion. I'm asking the council that it be tabled, which I think you kind of want to do anyway, and have it go back to personally review again with the, the commission. I would like to not only review it, but I would like to listen to Craig and Dawn and Elise's concerns, and I think that the suggestion about the California State Preservation Office, if they could help us, that would be tremendous. I also reached out to the Dean of Heritage Conservation at USC, which is where the city actually sends us commissioners to go to learn about the law, to help clarify this for us. We just redid a plaque, I'm sure you heard about, that we didn't get all the facts, and it was a costly mistake, and we don't want to make another costly mistake. I'd like to get this right. I don't want to have to come back and waste time and try to amend it once we finally get the clarity, whether it's with, with the help of the state, or with the help of USC Heritage Conservation, or whatever we need to actually... All I want to do is follow the standards of the Department of the Interior. I don't want to make our own standards. I think they're in place to protect these structures, and I think it's important that we follow them.
Okay, thank you, Gina.
Thank you, Gina.
Elise?
It's been a long night. I, I have some handouts, but I don't have enough. My main concern tonight is with the phrase, visible from the public right-of-way. I have searched and studied the 2017 Secretary of Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties, and I could find no place in the standards that use that term, visible from the public right-of-way, the way it is being used in our ordinance. On page 101 of the standards, in a section about alterations and additions, it talks about the different parts of the roof. And it said, like, if you're adding service equipment, such as heating and air conditioning, elevator housing, solar pan, panels, deck, terraces, sky, things like that, it says that they should be inconspicuous or minimally visible on the site and from the public right-of-way, and do not damage or obscure character-defining historic features. So that's how they're using that term. It's, it's like adding a further protection. And on page 161, it shows a picture of a building that had some new construction on it, and it says, the, this property is an example of a new building pictured, was compatible building located in the back of the site so as not to impact the historic use, and was minimally visible from the public right-of-way. So in both of these instances, the standards are saying that whether the site, whether it's on the site or on the, or viewable from the public right-of-way, alterations and additions cannot damage or obscure character-defining historic features. So one of the standards, I think Craig mentioned number nine, states, reads, "New additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction will not destroy historic materials, features, and spatial relationships that characterize the property. The new work will be differentiated from the old and will be compatible with historic materials, features, size, scale, proportion, and massing to protect the integrity of the property and its environment." It doesn't say anything about whether it has to be visible from the, from a public right-of-way or not. So the way the ordinance is using it, in particular on 4-... I'm looking at the clean copy now. So it's, on page eight to nine, 4-8.15A, it says that, that a permit is not required for major work on a non-landmark structure of a landmark property if the structure aren't visible from the public right-of-way. So that's giving less protection. And since we have landmarks in this community that aren't visible for, from the right-of-way, like the Ojai Valley Inn, this could lead to problems. For instance, if the Ojai Valley Inn wanted to build a very modern restaurant next to the Neff Lounge, they could do this under that, this ordinance, because it's not viewable from the, from a right-of-way. So under 4-18.15B2, it says, "The approval of a minor work permit will be required for exterior alteration of a landmark if the area of alteration is not a character-defining element and the area of alteration is not visible from the public right-of-way." I think, I think this term is going to cause nothing but confusion down the road, and I propose to the council that every place that uses that word just be struck out, and if you're, you're not going to vote on this tonight, to send it back to the HPC. Now, the thing that's unusual is that in April, the proposed amendments that were brought by Mr. Summers had all, there were four instances where this word...
I think there's going to be another opportunity for you to address this, so because...
Am I over?
You're way over.
Oh, I am? I'm sorry.
But, but you're enthusiastic, I like that.
Sorry.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I don't think any action will be taken this evening in this comments. Bill?
Yeah, the action I would like to take is to continue the item. And the reason for that is that I believe we should continue the item so that it can come back to us, would be the August 28th meeting. So we can have a discussion of council concerns, or council considerations, or council advice for the HPC. It's our only opportunity. We can't discuss this with the HPC directly. So I think it's a good idea for it to go back to HPC, but I also think that we ought to have an opportunity for council to discuss the provisions and concerns. For example, I, I fully agree with the right-of-way discussion, I have other concerns. But I don't have any opportunity for doing that unless we continue the item to a date certain, which is August 28th, which is my motion.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we continue to August 28th. There's no further discussion? So ordered. Very good. Thanks, guys, for hanging in there.
Thanks for your input. Get it in writing to us. Thank you.
I need a one-minute break.
Yeah, we will, okay.
I don't want to miss out.
Okay, I'll take notes. Okay, well...
You know, the interesting thing is, how long did it take them to put this together?
Hey, we all have consensus. We're going to look at some more.
Make comments on it, make a decision in three days.
I was just looking at that, actually.
Blurry eye on this stuff. And then you start looking up stuff. You get even more blurry eye. Yeah.
Sort of interesting when you see...
One of them's going to be that good.
He's a pack of calluses.
Very difficult to bridge.
It's very difficult to bridge. Our break. Let's see if we can get this wrapped up.
Who happened?
I do want to say one thing before I forget or fall asleep. No disrespect, but to a very dear friend who I'm sure went to her reward because she deserved it, and that is Larie B. Arndsted, known in some quarters as the First Lady of Ojai, passed on very recently at age 98. And I guess we're on the air. I'll say this anyway. I told her daughter at the memorial service that I had the privilege of being the last gentleman to check into a motel with Larie. My wife was also with us during the fire. She was mandatorily evacuated, as were we and a bunch of others, and so we checked in up at Solvang, got everybody to a safe location before I returned to join the smoke eaters. So, Larie was a really, really great person. She also has the history of the city of Long Beach, since you're going to the convention there. Moved here in 1950. She will be sorely missed. She was the first woman to be invited into the Rotarians' organization, a couple of years before the national Rotarians or international caught up with things and agreed that was a good idea. And she was the first female president of Rotary here in the valley. So, she will be missed, and I'd like to adjourn the meeting tonight in her honor when we get to that point.
Mayor Nuss could just add something.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I am a member of the Rotary Club that she's part of, and it was so inspiring, Larie. Just a few weeks ago, I mean, she was at meetings, participating in meetings, giving a talk about her history very recently, and I now know what an incredible demonstration of spirit that was of the health conditions that she was dealing with, to still be so positive and smiling and participating so positively in a group of people like that in the face of her situation. And I will always remember that. Absolutely inspiring.
Yeah. She's a great person. She also came out for the David Mason Memorial, which was really nice. Okay, guys, let's go around the table, I guess. Paul, you want to start? Do you have anything?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Susa?
I'll just mention that, I don't know if... Did you write a letter to the...
I'm going to.
You're going to?
The 13th is the deadline, right?
Yeah, the 13th. We have an opportunity. I sent the letter that I wrote as individual council member to support a resolution. It's going to the League of Cities to preempt... Because right now... Okay, let me see if I can explain it. The state law preempts local law, so that we cannot actually ban coagulant rodenticides, but we have our own resolution or... Yeah.
We can't control the public works, but nothing else.
Yeah, we can only control public works. But this has been so long in coming. I mean, the city of Malibu, so they need five, a minimum of five letters from individual council members. And it's very easy. They sent already a form letter. All you have to do is put your name at the top and at the bottom. So, if a council member, Yarick will do it. I've done it. Maybe anybody else wants to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, here's a copy. Here's a copy of the letter.
Would it be in order for us to circulate that or document to everyone directly, or to the city manager?
We already did, didn't we?
As long as you can sign individually, it's fine.
We've already... This is the letter. And I sent it to you, but I can send it again. And then, one other question. So, you're meeting with Ojai Hub people? We're going to get that on...
I can give an update on that in my report. Yes, I did meet with them last week.
And then, I wanted to just call attention to County Supervisor John Saragosa wrote an excellent letter called "Cannot Stay Silent," regarding the inhumane separation of immigrant children from their parents. I think it's just very important for people to speak out. And I was... This was in yesterday's Ventura County Star. I mean, this is on everyone's mind. You know, we don't bring it up during council meetings, but the whole town is discussing it. So, and there are people here, Rain Perry, there's a number of people who are actually at some of these... There's a list of places in Southern California where they're kept, and they're keeping vigil, and they're not there to oppose the caretakers, the people, but to oppose the policy. So, yeah.
Randy? Bill?
A couple of things. Captain Frye, you had indicated that Sheriff Starling was going to come back with an enforcement protocol with respect to unlicensed cannabis dispensaries and delivery services inside the city limits. And I just remind you that we had this discussion, and you guys were working on it.
Yep, still working on it.
And was under an hour? Any timetable for...
I don't have a timetable for you. It's definitely something that we're working on, but I can't give you a timetable.
And I particularly think it's important, given the public health aspect, you know, in terms of the fact that there's more and more of divergence in the contaminant levels between the licensed and the nonlicensed, and it is a public health issue.
Agreed.
Second of all, city manager, I think I've circulated the fact that we have on the books an ordinance that states that permities and contractees in Libby Park are not to use disposable plasticware. I'm inspired by the presentation by the children. We have concrete action we're able to take right now without any additional council action whatsoever with respect to everything that's going on in Libby Park. And I was wondering if we have informed the contractees and permities in Libby Park of our current code with respect to non-compostable plastic, single-use ware.
I believe that word did go out a couple of weeks ago. I know there was an email that went out to all the staff, and I believe that was followed up to all the permities as well, but I'll double-check on that. You're welcome.
That covers styrofoam and all that.
Well, we already have that, but it also includes the plastic straws, plastics utensils, plastic plates, anything that's not compostable. It's not supposed to be allowed anywhere by any permit to your contractor that uses public property. I believe that covers SARS-OTI as well. So, I just thought, you know, it's timely to make sure we enforce our code on that respect. And as far as a future agenda item, I think we need to revisit the affordable definition in our current code with respect to... But that's a future agenda.
What did you just throw in? Affordable? Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So, the paper did contact me with some questions about all this, so I'll get together with you, and we'll do a little press release about this. Okay? Yeah.
And you were working on something about the plastic non-compostable straws?
Yes, yes. But in the meantime, I think we should get the word out about this... Yeah. I'm not prepared to make a statement, but yes, I'm working on it.
Okay, Steve.
Thank you. A few things. I'll try to be brief here. Just wanted to pass on, we did contact CACEDIS to get an update in terms of what they're doing with their pipeline analysis. They reported back to us that they recently surveyed 42 miles of pipelines. Out of... From that process, they specifically pinpointed and repaired 24 leaks. They know that they're always repairing leaks to the system because it's an aged system, but these were 24 that were specifically identified as part of this process of the recent analysis. They've also created a hydraulic model and run tests, and they have found that there are several areas that met the standards at the time of installation but do not meet the current standards. They are currently scoping out the improvements that need to be made to address that. They expect to have proposals from consultants by the end of the month to begin the design phase. Design phase expected to take six to 12 months of construction, likely beginning by this time next year. So, that's the report that we got from CACEDIS on the pipelines. Other things that I wanted to briefly report on, the city engineer and I, Mr. Grant, met with Regina with Sierra Water Progressive, just to get an update on where they are on the first phase of their work. They are rapidly working through that, and they expect to have some deliverables to us before the end of the month, probably in the next week or two. So, once we get that, I know that's going to trigger a potential next decision phase for city council, and depending on where the potential grants and all that lie, and I'll take a look at that, and I will inform the council on that. But there might be a possibility that we might want to come back before the August 28 meeting to take a look at that information again. So, I'll get a little bit more analysis and get that off to the council so that we can actually have a little bit more that you can work off here, but just kind of giving you the heads-up in terms of how all that is, the timing on that, because obviously, if we do want to get in line to be able to go after certain grants, there is timeliness involved there. But anyways, they're making good progress. Also, I wanted to note that we'll be putting on a press release this week about the public launch of the Exela Permit Tracking System. So, that is now up and going, so people can access that 24/7. So, we'll make sure that you get a copy of that press release. Also, wanted to note that we are about to enter the silly season, and the nomination period for the seats on city council will be opening this Monday, July 10.
Oh, you poor people.
Excuse me, 16. Sorry, I took my glasses off there for a moment. So, Monday, July 16. So, correct. We have the mayor's seat and three members of the city council. The nomination period is from the 16th of July through Friday, August 10, and that period would be extended to the 15th of August should an incumbent not file for any of those seats. So... And then, also wanted to just briefly go over the future agenda items for August 28. We have the HPC ordinance, which was continued to that meeting as a date certain. We also have the public hearing continued from the planning and building fees that was continued to August 28 as a date certain. We have the presentation from Ojai Hub, which was requested by two members of council. We have that lined up for August 28. We'll also be coming back with a quarterly goals report, the tree service maintenance agreement, and the EV charging stations analysis. That was another one that council had asked that we come back end of August. Also slated for discussion, banner policy discussion, the building code update, assuming that we were able to complete that process with the building appeal board, the water coordinator position. And then, if we can get to all these, the other potential items that we have for the August 28 are tiny homes, and the solar guidelines and water-wise. So, I know we're not going to be able to get to all that, but some of those were demanded by council. So, that's at least what we're looking at, the potential miss for August 28. So...
May I ask something?
Sure.
I'm very willing to meet the week prior or extra meeting after. Okay, after? After?
After.
After. Okay, so...
I'm really trying to plan a travel.
Okay. Okay, no, well, I just wanted to...
You're going to Parliament or something, don't you?
I thought we could, you know, just discuss if the agenda is too packed.
After, please.
After, okay. Might have an extra meeting in September, possibly.
We could do that, sure.
I have two items. One, August 2, I think roughly 11 o'clock in the morning in Libby Park. We're going to do the... APCD is going to come up, I think Monique Limone, you know, for the battery-operated landscape operations. So, I would encourage all of us, if we put that on our calendars, to be there. They want to use this as a model for the rest of the communities to do the same thing. And with regard to... I can't... Not fire-resistant, but anyway. There is a pile of brush at the bike path and Montgomery Street. It is the slash, or what might be thought of as the slash, from a tree that went down. I suspect our friends at the county maybe should have taken care of it, but the reason I know where the pile is because I sort of dragged it over there, so it now overlaps our boundary. If you can't get the county to do it, then I said they asked Craig to shred it.
That's good. That's really good.
Just take care of it, you know, to chip it. It's a small pile, and they could, I'm sure, dump it right over here at the organic garden as part of the mow.
All right. As long as it didn't come from the adjacent lot as part of their "we" debatement, so...
I like your example behavior there, Mayor.
We'll look into that. Thank you. But on the bike path, just east of Montgomery?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right on the corner there. Not urgent, but be a good idea because some enterprising person may decide to... Bill?
Speaking of bike path, I had extensive family involved in town for my father's 90th birthday. Many of them are serious bike riders, and they all came to me and said, "Why is it so deteriorated and so rough and so many root heaves like we see? It's really getting bad." And I don't know what the plan is, but I just... Passing on the observation.
Oh, you're talking about the bike path?
The bike path.
Yeah.
The Valley Bike.
I know. It's pretty bumpy.
Maintained by the county. We can check and see where...
The entire way, even through the city?
Through the city, except for a stretch out past Fox is maintained by the city. And I'm not sure where the exact boundary is on that.
Andy was in charge of that, and there is a fund where they're supposed to spend it to maintain the trails, but usually they respond to complaints.
Well, there we go.
They're not necessarily patrolling it.
Maybe we should forward a complaint, then.
Okay. So, if there's no further business for the good of the order, I'm going to let Paul go home to bed.
I just want to say how popular our chief of police is during the Fourth of July. Was it my imagination? You were walking down, and everybody... I thought, wow, are they cheering for us? But I know I saw the captain. It was really wonderful.
It was a very warm reception. It was very nice. And warm in more than one way. It was pretty warm out that day, but I know I saw Councilmember Haney out there. I was walking the route to thank my volunteers because those parades don't go off without a lot of effort from people, and we use a lot of volunteers to keep the cost down. So, I walked the four-mile parade route up and down to thank all my volunteers for being there.
You say Councilman Haney was walking out there?
He was enjoying the parade.
I was...
I had my granddaughter. We were having a great time.
I was in it, and I walked it and rode my bike. I was almost tired of it.
And we didn't have the luxury of the sheriff being there this year.
In honor of Larie.
Thanks for hanging out with us, Steve.